Good evening, everybody. All right, so welcome to the Joint Boards of Education for Evanston Township High School, District 202 and Evanston Skokie District 65. And it's February 21st, 2023. And can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Lindsey Ryan.
Here.
Here.
Fernanda.
Here.
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 Here, thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda is Board and Superintendent's comments. So maybe we'll start with the superintendents and we'll start with Dr. Campbell.
Well, thank you, Madam President. Just like to welcome all of our colleagues and friends from District 65 and all of the, those of you who have also joined us from Northwestern and NIRA. Welcome to our, to our board meeting and welcome to 202. We are just delighted to be able to host these meetings twice a year. And this is especially special tonight because we've got some things that have been on the docket with both districts for a long time, like Abbott, that are finally getting up and moving. And this is a great topic to be able to talk about tonight. Abbott has been in our district since the mid 90s and I'm glad that District 65 is on board. And so hearing all of the wonderful updates tonight would be very informative for our community and for both boards. Dr. Horton?
So fancy, I love this push the button, right? Thank you all. We're excited to be here, so thank you for welcoming us into your home. We are excited again about what's happened so far in our partnership with 202. I just wanted to just share a little bit that we have had some really amazing outcomes. We had our first spelling bee where a student placed first. Someone really close to us, son, took first place. I won't call them, but did really well. We have our Spanish bee coming up in March. We also had our first district, I'm not going to say first, but we relaunched our debate programs. We had a debate competition in Indiana. Our students competed and weren't really well. We even had in the novice category, one of our students a place, which is, which is exciting. Getting ready to send them over to ETHS to kind of carry that on. And then just overall, we are excited about what we, what we're, the work that we're doing and how our students are responding collectively. So we're excited about what we're going to hear tonight. The partnership with NIRA is really valuable to us, so to hear that and then learn a little bit more about our, like our direct partnerships that's really making a difference for the students in our community. So, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. And so I'll take the opportunity to welcome District 65 and all our guests. It's really good to see you all. It fills a lot of good energy here tonight, so I'm looking forward to the conversations. I feel like every time we talk about our students, we are always talking about our students in our community. So when we're here talking about high school students, we're really speaking probably about District 65 and vice versa, but this is really a time when we can do it on a formal, in a formal way. So, and we only do it, what, a couple of times a year? I was not even sure how to start this. It seems like it's been a long time. Maybe it's been so long since you've been here with us. So I hope you feel welcome. Let us know if you need anything and thank you for being here. Sergio.
Sure, thank you, Pat, for the warm welcome and Marcus and colleagues here at 202 Board. Again, on behalf of our school board, I want, again, I appreciate the continued collaboration. And again, I think, you know, as we continue to move past this current pandemic, because we're still in the pandemic, I think it's critical that we highlight the collaboration that all our institutions are involved in. Again, it's, we can't do this alone. The pandemic has taught us that, that we really, really need to try to make whatever connections are possible to ensure that our students have equitable access to the resources and supports they need as well as their families, right? Again, you know, for me, I'm a firm believer in this bio-ecological view of children is that, again, their children are caged by families and caretakers are caged by communities. And when we can make connections across all of those concentric circles that make up our existence, we can guarantee and normalize success for all students. So again, so happy to participate in these cross-institutional conversations with their colleagues over at Northwestern. Again, we also have meetings with the City of Evanston and schools. So, and had a good conversation a couple of weeks back where we're going to try to coordinate services and really try to address some of the root causes that are causing these opportunity gaps, right? So really, really happy to be part of these conversations with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergio. All right, so we're going to go right into our agenda. The first item on the agenda is comments from the public. Where is Dr. Beavis? I can't see anybody. Maybe the, oh, there you go.
All right, we're going to start with public, normally don't start with public comments, so we're going to start with public comment. Speakers who have signed up for public comments will be invited in the order that they signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep time and signal to you at the end of two minutes as a courtesy. I will let you know it's time to stop at the three-minute mark in the event that becomes necessary. Speakers are asked to come forward and speak at the lectern. Please state your name and address. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individual are expressly prohibited. Please understand that the Board of Education does not respond to public comments, but will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. Our first public comment is Joe Mathias Shelbert.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joe Mathias Shelbert. I live at 1905 Grant Street here in Evanston, and I've been a proud member of this community for over 50 years. Yes, I'm 51, so. So can I start? Okay. My name is Joe Mathias Shelbert and I'm a parent of two children in District 65. I'm an alumni of both districts and have lived in the community for over 50 years. I'm also a teacher here at ETHS and the subjects I teach are astronomy, AP physics, and astrophysics. Tonight, I'm here as a parent to discuss an experience I had with District 65 and your math program. My personal experience as a parent has provided me insight into why some of the students are not being challenged in math in District 65. My son, who is in sixth grade at Haven, has been adversely affected by the political games of 65's math program. The story begins in fall of 2021, at least eight months before my son left Kingsley and went into Haven. I asked Principal Davis at Kingsley and then Principal Ladding at Haven about the advanced math opportunities offered at Haven. They didn't know, so I waited. I waited all the way till May and in May-
Two minutes.
-I still have not heard anything from the district, so I reached out again and I was eventually connected with District 65's central office. No one returned my emails, wouldn't get any response, until finally I got a generic email that said, "Wait a week," unsigned, unresponsible email. I did not hear anything in the months of June or July until August, when the Director of Mathematics finally reached out to me. Returned my calls to say I had missed the February deadline. I didn't know there was a deadline. Mr. Davis didn't know there was a deadline and neither did Mr. Ladding know there was a deadline. None of my community members knew there was a deadline. Yet, my son missed this deadline. So how can my son be held to a standard that nobody knew about? And when I confronted on this, he agreed that my son could then be tested at a cost at Northwestern University to see if he qualified to be in advanced math. That was not an option and I said, "I'm not going to pay for something that District 65 failed to produce."
One minute.
He explained to me, sorry. So your administration then agreed to test my son at District 65 in the next couple of days. He took the test unprepared due to the short timeline and scored in 97%, but yet that was not good enough because apparently 99% is required to take advanced math. Interesting. When I reminded him of my professional background and my son's 97% test performance, he hung up the phone after me after telling me that sometimes parents don't know what's best for their kids. Interesting. I reached out to him via email to no avail. Then I came to, excuse me for a second here. Then I heard nothing until August 11th, when I returned here at ETHS during my institute days. I was contacted, that, sorry, heard nothing and when returned to work at EHS and was contacted by multiple EHS administrators. They informed me that they had received an email from the Director of Mathematics at 65. He forwarded my private email conversations and my student test scores to my employers. I'm almost done. It was clear you're not providing the information and I did not have permission. He did not have permission to send it and why were he getting these emails? So because I'm running out of time, I'm just going to cut to the chase. My son has been poorly dealt with at District 65 and he's not being prepared for the programs here at ETHS. I would like him to take an advanced math course and your programs are failing our kids, plain and simple. And my kid has been a perfect example of this. Dr. Horton, I would like to continue this conversation with you because I've written you multiple emails to no reply. I've left voicemail messages, no reply. So I hope I can hear from you. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Mary Ann McBeth. Mary Ann, sorry, Mary Ann. I don't know, my glasses are on, my apologies.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann McBeth. I live at 2309 Ridgeway Avenue and have for 50 years as of this year. As I hear about the situation concerning the three high-ranking black female administrators being put on leave, it is concerning because being a black female and former employee in this building who faced racist and discriminatory practices from the time I was hired until the time I retired 33 years later. You would have thought that after 50 years, these practices, sorry, would have changed. Specifically, being in a community where claims to embrace equity and diversity and express the continued desire to have people of color and positions of change, it was expected in the early 70s that I was going to have to fight a system created to oppress me. But to hear you have put three black females on leave, two which left to secretive settlements while the real issues were pushed under the carpet-
Two minutes.
-and another, what I understand to be a pending discriminatory charge with the EEOC, where does it end? When does the Board of Education of all female leaders say enough is enough and you bring in an outside evaluator to assess what the problem is and find real solutions for the problem? When do you stop talking the talk and walk the real walk, which is about doing the right thing for employees of color, which in turn is doing the right thing for students of color? I implore the board to look in the mirror, understand this is an historical problem, and address the issue which has been in existence for a long time through investigating the system and the discriminatory practices which continue because you have yet to try to change them. Thank you.
Next public comment is Melissa Denton, is that right?
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Denton and I live at 5 Salem Circle in Evanston. I have a third grader at Willard Elementary School. I also am here on behalf of my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and I'm past Board Chair for Evanston Scholars. I'm here because representation matters. And when I say representation matters, I'm here to advise the Board of my concern regarding what appears to be a very distressing pattern. We recently learned that for the third time in the last two years, a black female member of senior leadership at District 202 has been placed on administrative leave. Representation matters. I'm here because as a mother, as a member of the community, and as an advocate for African-American women in this community, we are concerned that this is a systemic problem. We are concerned that our children are watching. We are concerned that we are watching and we are concerned that you have not done anything differently. To not have an outside counsel address this systemic problem is of concern. We are watching, we are concerned, and we vote. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment for this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is item for information. We have representatives from Northwestern University. Northwestern will talk to us about the partnerships, the NIRA update.
Good evening, Board members. Good evening, Superintendent Campbell, Superintendent Horton, District 65, District 202 Board members. My name is Dave Davis and I serve as the university's Senior Executive Director for Neighborhood and Community Relations. And so it is surprising to come into a room with this kind of positive energy, given the nature of my role, so I really appreciate that from the outset. So we're here to share an update on the wonderful partnership between Northwestern University, District 202, and District 65. This is something that's been in place for many years. The university has a bold and ambitious goal as being the model or the standard for how our major academic and research institution engages with its local community. And that's really rooted in the partnership with our educational systems from D65 to DO 202. So we have a new president, I'm sure you heard, that came on board just a few months ago, him and his dog. And he is here in Evanston and he's having a wonderful time, but he's also committed to this partnership. And so I just wanted to say on behalf of the president, our Board of Trustees, our academic institution, we are committed to the longevity of this partnership. We want to grow it, sustain it, and build on the good work that we've done. And so I have Northwestern's top academic brass next to me that's going to provide an update on the partnership. And I'm going to turn over to our interim dean for our School of Education and Social Policy, Dan McAdams, you're up.
Thank you. I'm Dan McAdams, the interim dean of the School of Education and Social Policy. It's wonderful to be here. Thank you for your hospitality. I've only been the dean for a year and it's a short-term thing. I'll be passing the baton on to the next filling in, but during my short tenure, one, probably I've become more impressed than in almost any other area in the partnerships that faculty at Northwestern, both in the School of Education and Social Policy and throughout the university, have developed with various community groups, especially youth-serving organizations like ETHS, the schools that make up District 65, the YMCA, libraries, and so on. I really, as a faculty member, never knew about these and I find them to be inspiring and powerful. I want to say that so impressed am I with this that I've kind of drunk the Kool-Aid on NIRA and all these other wonderful partnerships that we're going to talk about tonight and see that our school will continue to affirm them going forward. I recently had a meeting with President Schill and Provost Haggerty regarding strategic planning for the future and I articulated three top priorities for the School of Education and Social Policy at Northwestern. And at the top of that list was to continue to promote community education partners, research-practice partnerships of this sort that we'll be talking about tonight. So, thank you very much. Oh, I turn it over now to Nicole Pinkard to my left here.
Hello, it's good to be back with you. Everyone, my name is Nicole Pinkard, faculty in, professor, actually, I can say this now, Alice Hamilton, Professor of Learning Sciences and fortunate to be the faculty director of the Office of Community Education Partnerships. And we're looking forward to sharing with you, but I'm going to turn it over to Emily, my co-director, who's going to start out this presentation.
Hi, I'm Emily Farren. I'm the interim assistant dean for Community Education Partnerships, so I co-lead the Office of Community Education Partnerships with Nicole. So really briefly, today we are going to introduce what we do in the Office of Community Education Partnerships and we're going to talk through three components of that work. The Northwestern District 65 Partnership Office, led by Jen Lewin. The Northwestern Evanston Education Research Alliance, or NIRA, which is led by Jayne Agbarak, who couldn't be with us tonight. And the Northwestern ETHS Partnership Office, led by Kristin Perkins over here, and also supported by Haley Cox Montijo, both of those offices. So, and then we'll have a brief Q and A. So Nicole, do you want to introduce OSEP for us?
Sorry about that. So the Office of Community Education Partnership really is an entity really focused on making sure that we have a space to bring our faculty together, to put forth in one, in one place, ways in which we're engaging in the community. Our mission is to promote, to promote built capacity for and engage in actionable partnerships that advance learning and well-being of students in Evanston, Chicago, and beyond.
And we'll turn it over to Jen.
Hi, sorry, my microphone. And I just want to say hello. I'm sorry, our backs are towards, but I want to recognize the audience back here, too. So I'm Jen Lewin and I am the partnership coordinator for the Northwestern District 65 Partnership Office. So my role was established in fall of 2016 and you'll hear from Kristin, her role was established a few years prior. And the goal of the offices is to really have a liaison or a person who is kind of a bridge or a conduit between the two organizations. So we work with District 65 families, students, administrators, staff, you know, across the whole institution, and then the same on the Northwestern side, students, faculty, staff, and also as knowledge brokers for the whole Evanston community. So our goal is to really be good listeners and figure out district priorities, what's the vision and mission of the university, and how can we bring partnerships together in a meaningful way that represent both institutions? So I have the, a fun, a really fun part where I get to talk about some of the partnership work. Unfortunately, I had to narrow it down and really try and choose just a couple of examples with the short amount of time we have. So one, the first one that I'll talk about is called, affectionately we refer to it as LIT. It is Learn and Imagine Together Through Theater. And the vision of the LIT program was to bring a partnership together between the Words Theater at the university, which includes Imagine You, and then work with District 65 to bring a robust theater experience to the students of District 65. So for the past couple of years, the first launch was during the pandemic, so this was a virtual experience and both sides really came together and managed to put together something super fun, even though it was in the middle of a pandemic. And serendipitously, the National Endowment for the Arts really focuses on theater experiences for young kids as a way to promote compassion, empathy, self-awareness. So this was a wonderful opportunity for kids to have in a kind of unpredictable time. And then the second year, which was this past fall, we brought the students to the university and this was with careful organization and planning between the award-winning District 65 Drama Department, Stacy Beersley from the Department of Curriculum Instruction, and then also with our wonderful folks at the Words Theater Group and Imagine You. And then thanks to folks like Dave Davis and Neighborhood and Community Relations, we were able to fund the project to bring all third graders to the university. Another example of a wonderful partnership, and this is an example of two partnerships that were already existing in the district that blossomed into research-practice partnerships, which you'll hear more about from my NIRA colleagues. And these were two professors who were very invested in District 65 and thought about how can we use coding for problem-solving and critical thinking skills? So one project uses music and problem-solving through coding. Another project focuses on sports and digital wearables so that the kids can get some feedback about some of the sports activities that they're doing. This included professional development for teachers, some instructional materials, and importantly, some Northwestern volunteers. So the magic of seeing the fifth grader's eyes when they're, these university students come in, they're like, "I get to talk to them and I get to do coding and they're going to help me?" It's been a really, really fun project to be a part of. And then just in general, we're looking to constantly grow and that means sustaining current partnerships that we have and listening and learning about new partnerships that would benefit both institutions. And so we're always seeking out ways to support the vision and mission of District 65 and Dr. Horton's miracles framework and thinking about the strategic plan and how our partnerships really need to focus on some of the problems of practice that the district would like to solve or what is the enrichment? Where are there some gaps and opportunities? Is it theater? Is it sports? Is it, you know, any of the above? And really listening to how that could look. And then also, as was mentioned previously, there's transition in leadership that happens from time to time. And so really being, you know, kind of a person that's in a role and able to kind of see what's going on in both sides and help with those transitions and really try and facilitate conversations. And I will pass it back to, thank you.
Thanks, Jen. So because we have these longstanding relationships with the districts rooted in trust and in work that is guided by our shared values and principles, we've been able to further build our partnership to support research that is mutually beneficial. And we call this research-practice partnership NIRA, Northwestern Evanston Education Research Alliance. And this has been co-developed by folks at the district and the university with the support of the Lewis Sabring Family Foundation, Spencer Foundation, and the William T. Grant Foundation. So when we say research-practice partnership, or RPP, we mean that instead of traditional mosquito-type research, the research happens in the district, it's co-designed so that it relates to actual problems of practice and district priorities. And it's not just inquiry that academics are interested in that doesn't help locally. So partnership, the partnership offices and the NIRA teams work closely with the amazing research staff from both of the districts to do things like craft research agendas, make connections across the institutions, execute legal agreements that define the work and protect privacy, and eventually share results. So the priorities of this work generally fall into three buckets. One is providing technical assistance. Sometimes we pair up experts across institutions to address a research question and Nicole will give an example of this in a moment with the Student Assignment Planning Project. Another is to understand problems of practice. We, as institutions, need to understand the issues and reflect on them before making decisions such as changing policy or practice. A great example of this is the current work at ETHS to investigate in-school truancy, already mentioned in a previous ETHS board meeting. What we've learned from this study will inform practice and policy at ETHS to improve outcomes for students. The third priority is to develop, implement, and evaluate solutions. These solutions are sometimes built with Evanston educators, sometimes built by researchers, but always implemented to address teacher and student needs and interests identified by the districts. This often includes iteration, so intervention improves over time. Districts get feedback on effectiveness as well as curriculum, tools, professional development. One such collaboration was mentioned by Jen, the development of the CS curriculum that included training and support for teachers around ToonPad and SportSense. And we have similar projects in science, math, ELA, music, as well as interventions to address student and teacher identity and development. So to illustrate how this works, Nicole is going to give you a quick example that we're all familiar with of how NU researchers and District 65 experts have worked together on the Student Assignment Planning Project.
Yes, actually, the slide before that talks about the three areas of providing technical assistance, understanding problems of practice, and developing and evaluating solutions. I think the SAP project that we were doing with D65 started off, I think, really thinking about technical assistance and colleague Karen Smolowicz was working with the district around transportation and in COVID, how do we, you know, deal with the bus costs? But as the district was working with Sarita Smith, she was charged with really thinking about the SAP, we were invited to be members, both in technical assistance, but given Karen and I are also community members, we applied and we were on the SAP. And so I think we spent a- And so I think we spent a year working very closely, meeting consistently, constantly, both with as SAP members, but also as technical assistants, with trying to make sure that the right amount of information was brought to the community, and really trying to make sure that we were using data to present and understanding in a, in a, in a historical way that would probably create a space so that community members can understand the history of the situation, be given facts, and help, help to facilitate a process such that the community can arrive at the decision. And I think that that process of providing technical assistance, really then taking a step back and understanding the problems of reaching to a solution. Karen was phenomenal with bringing in her, her students, and then the, the team of NERA, the staff of NERA, with the data agreements that we have in place with the district, were able to really look at the data in a way, even look at some of the, the solutions being put forth by the consultants, and I think really provide an analysis and an ear that allowed the team, led by Dr. Horton and Sarita, to, I think, put forth some solutions that have brought us to a phenomenal space. So it's important for me to say that the process was beneficial, we hope, for the district, but we also think was really beneficial for our students. It made visible, when we talk about policies, the implications, nothing's simple, right? And that you have to think about the trade-offs. And even now, we've taken some of these cases and continue to make use of them, and we're still continuing to work on the SAP. And so we look at this as an example, not just around curriculum, but ways in which Northwestern, the School of Education, can really be an assist of the full spectrum of how do we make sure we, as a community, are thinking about how we work together to create the best educational situations for our kids.
Thanks, Nicole. So to give you a really quick sense of the variety of this work and the extent of our collaboration, this is a slide that provides a quick snapshot of current projects, 10 in District 65 and seven at ETHS. So one way we can categorize the project is by level, but level of focus. So if each project is a dot in this matrix, you can see that we are supporting projects at the system level, at the practitioner level, and at the student level. And their current progress ranges from early development to completion and dissemination. So looking ahead, two examples of what we're excited about coming, coming up are refining our communication protocols, making sure that we are really clear with all of the constituents about exactly what's going on and when. And we're also starting to explore how to possibly include community-based organizations that are youth-facing in the, the NERA process. Can we develop a research-practice partnership that includes them so that we have a more holistic view of student experiences? So with that, I will hand it off to Kristin.
Thank you, Emily. Hi, everyone, I'm Kristin Perkins. I would like to share about the work of the Northwestern ETHS Partnership Office, where we also strive for mutually beneficial collaboration. Some folks might assume that the work of the high school partnership is about increasing an admissions pipeline for ETHS students to go to Northwestern. But the mission of the work is really about collaboration that benefits both NU and ETHS in ways that enhance the educational experience of all students. We started 10 years ago with a focus on STEM, but have since expanded the partnership and collaboration to our four strategic priorities that you see here. Each year, we have over 100 different areas of partnership that are a part of the work. I'd like to highlight a couple of examples that demonstrate the educational synergy between the high school and the university, when we can align goals and resources to learn from each other. So one example, the last time that I was here before the 202 board, this was in development before, before the pandemic in 2019. So this year will be the third run of Unique Joint Course Educational Justice and Community-Based Research Methods. It was co-designed by Professors Megan Bang and Shadine Basugi, together with amazing ETHS educators Cory Winchester and Taronda Woods. The teaching team has expanded now to include additional ETHS teachers, graduate students from the School of Education Social Policy, and 10 informal educators from McGaw YMCA. There are 20 ETHS undergrad, or, I'm sorry, 20 undergrads and 20 ETHS students who take this Northwestern course. And the ETHS students are learning about college-level work, improving reading and writing skills, but also the teaching team makes sure to give the ETHS students space to share their lived experience in the education system and as part of the Evanston community. And then the course instructors situate this as just as valuable as the learned experience of the Northwestern students from their education theory courses that they bring to the table. The model has been very successful and will be replicated to next year, include an additional course offering about the intersection of race, power, and technology. Over the course of 10 years, we've iterated and learned a lot. Our vision of the next 10 years is deepening the work with Northwestern students who are learning and supported as they lead collaboration and partnership. We're all part of this great community of Evanston. We have NU alum who are ETHS staff members, and we have ETHS leaders who teach in Northwestern School of Education. As educators, and as Monique and Mr. Hernandez both mentioned, like, we have, we all care about all of these young people. There are 6,500 D-65 students, 3,600 ETHS students, and 8,000 undergrads and 8,000 graduate students. All of these young people are part of this education community, and there is so much promise and possibility in our collective future. Just this week in partnership, we had 15 ETHS students in our junior chapter of the Society of Women Engineers who are building underwater robots. We have seven graduate students from the Masters of Science in Education Program who are interning with ETHS EdTech and incoming student transition teams. We have five undergrad students from Northwestern's Leadership for Racial Equity Program, who are organizing an event for avid seniors about preparing for college life. We have four Northwestern students who are organizing a healthcare career panel for our Women in STEM group. We have a graduate student supporting the ETHS Data Science Team, planning a unit on racial bias in AI and machine learning. Inspired by the Black Student Summits, we have a team of Northwestern students who are organizing the annual Black Men Lead Conference, bringing together ETHS and Northwestern students and faculty, and they're looking forward to having both Dr. Horton and Dr. Campbell join them on campus this weekend. We have Kellogg MBA students organizing visits to ETHS entrepreneurship classrooms. We have History Department ETHS staff who are attending a community event hosted by One Book, One Northwestern. We have an undergraduate student leading weekly workshops in Spanish for ETHS parents to learn advanced computer skills. We have ETHS staff connecting NU folks who will lead various breakout sessions for the upcoming Mina Latinx LGBTQ+ summits. All are the, all of these are great examples of the mutual benefit and synergy. And all of these are from just this week's work. It's been a short week, but we've built a lot over 10 years. So we want to leave you with these best practices that make this partnership work so well. We're fortunate to have the opportunity to work so closely with both districts, who are leaders and trailblazers in education. And we thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening, and welcome any questions that you have.
That's amazing. Go ahead, Monique.
You know, I was just going to say, mic drop. I mean, you know, this is, Kristin knows how to, you know, she's been here a minute, so she knows how to, to do that. But just to think about the overarching support and engagement that you all have with our students, and yeah, you know me very well, they're all our students, and not just when we meet jointly, is amazing and should be shared. I don't know, Mr. Davis, how you put that out there to the community, especially now, as people are, are inquiring, but this is a big deal. This is an investment in our future. And, and so I, I say it all the time, that if we're not thinking about what's happening now for what will happen and sustain Evanston in the future, and that means pouring into our children, then we're not thinking about the best thing about Evanston. So this is, this is worth blasting. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Monique.
So I have to agree. I think that this is pretty incredible, just hearing that list is just amazing, and all the work that's being done across this community for, for our students just makes me proud and, and grateful that Northwestern happens to be in this community. And, and we happen to be a two-public-school district community. So, you know, we, we're, we're here, and, and we were working in this collaborative way, and we're using all of our resources, and we have some work ahead of us. We've not, we're not, we're not done. We've got lots to do. We can, we know some of the challenges that our community offers. So we're very diverse in just about any way you can imagine, and that's also our biggest challenge. There are so many perspectives and opinions, and, and people need to be heard and listened to. So we have, we have all of that, that we have to sort through and navigate. So, so it takes, it literally takes a village, and this is when I can feel this village. I was really excited about Northwestern coming to this meeting, because I know the resources we have, the resources you have, and, and I have to say, I continue to be excited and looking forward to the work ahead.
I wanted to, again, echo your sentiments as well, Pat. You know, I want to thank the colleagues from Northwestern who participated in our SAP process and, again, provided that TA, as well as being, again, you, you are community members, right? So the beautiful thing is that we, you know, many of the folks who are part of SAP, and I'm su, I'm such a advocate for ensuring that we are, we include folks in the conversation who are impacted by our policies and programs and practices. So to have our colleagues from Northwestern, who are also parents in the district or who are residents, is just super critical, and, 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 and it makes it, ensures that you have skin in the game, right? And that we really, really think through, and particularly through our SAP process, which, again, was way overdue, and was an oversight, but now we've dealt with it, that you were part of that conversation, and it's just, again, I, I thank you for, for providing that, that, your expertise, your knowledge, your technical assistance in that particular process, which is ongoing. Again, we're in phase two now, and I'm sure you've been, you've been in part of those meetings as well, where we're starting to decide on, on the content and, and our curriculum and all that good stuff, and how we design our new school. So again, glad to have you as partners, glad to, to move together with you and co-conspire to ensure that we embed and operationalize equity and normalize success for all students in Evanston, not, not just the ones with privilege, but the ones who need it most as well. So I really appreciate all the, all the work that you do alongside of us. And one of the things on the list that, that you talked about was around racial bias and machine learning, again, a challenge, right? As we, as we think about the future of education and how, again, these technologies is going to impact the way educators do our jobs. So, so just, again, the beauty of, of being thoughtful and thinking and taking on some of these new challenges that are coming forth that technology is, is putting before us is, is very bold, and, and I'm glad that we're having that conversation and we're looking into that.
Um, this is a bit strange to bring up in this context, because some of the players are not here. But while this is all very exciting about these partnerships and really operationalizing equity in a multitude of ways, I do want to acknowledge that the piece that might be missing in this conversation is about affordable housing, that we can continue to put all sorts of investments in our school systems, but if NU's planning and our city council are not protecting our diverse population by making sure that this is a livable city, the populations we're trying to serve in these schools are going to radically change. And so I just want to, you know, commend the work that is happening, and I think on, you know, where, where we all sit, this is the work that we can do to collaborate, but I want to just acknowledge this other piece, that many of us sit on the city, city schools liaison, and we, we try to have these conversations, but if we don't have effective policy on the city council side, and if Northwestern is not being good stewards of the space that they occupy, we could be doing all of these incredible things for a population that can't afford to live here. And so I just want to put out there that I think that that, that piece of the conversation has to be included in every conversation that we're having, whether everybody is in the room at the right time or not, but to ensure that, that we can continue to be the Evanston that everybody loves and celebrates and wants to sustain. Because I think, I will say, as a school board member, this is something that keeps me up at night, that we're going to build a fifth ward school, and we're going to do all of these things, and, and that if we can't make this city something, somewhere that people can afford to live, we're not going to be able to provide an equitable educational experience to all students. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Biz. Northwestern, just wanted to say thank you for the partnership. There's a lot that's come from that, and even listening to the presentations tonight, it's really connecting the dots. So I hear your name a lot, Jen, right? I never see Jen, but Jen's, the name is everywhere, right? So I just want to thank you, and then also knowing that we have the, we're excited to be able to partner with you with the AERA Conference to talk about the work around that fifth ward school. I don't know how we would have gotten the outcomes, you know, that we've gotten from that process without that work. And just for the record, we're, we want to have more discussions, because the fifth ward school is just a start. We want to go deeper, and we want to get deeper into building STEM labs and things of that nature. And I know in conversations I've had with you all, that Northwestern has a lot of, you know, interest and excitement in it, but thank you for the work that you've done, and we'll continue to cherish this partnership.
Hi, it's good to see so many of you. I have a Northwestern employee coming up on 17 years, so it's really great to see the progress. You know, when I first started, I don't know, Kristin, if you remember, we talked 10 years ago when I was working on like a STEM thesis project, and Nicole, I remember our conversations as well. So it's great to see the amount of progress, just overall. I did have a question about the Educational Justice and Community-Based Research class. Are the ETHS students also receiving, like, college credit then for that? That could be transferable on a transcript?
Yes, they are getting the same, so I believe this course is SESP 351, and they're getting credit for, maybe 251, I may have misspoke, but they're getting the same Northwestern credit, and that is transferable. And then that's part of the, you know, the, the model that has worked and something that will continue, like, as we're looking at the next Race Power and Technology course as well.
Yeah, that's really wonderful to hear. Thank you. And I will say, I've always felt like this was something that was lacking, and I really feel like in the last five, six years, this has just really picked up momentum. I hope that we can keep this going. I think that there's still tremendous opportunities, whether it's around sports. I have season tickets to the women's basketball team, and it's so hard seeing it be so empty, while also knowing how many, you know, District 65 this year, with the new leader, they now have this whole basketball program going from the elementary level all the way to the middle school. You know, there's also other opportunities, working with our community, the PTA, District 65, the PTA Equity Project, that's been a tremendous thing. That's also happened the last several years, and then, as Dr. Horton mentioned, the fifth ward school. So we really hope we can keep this going. Thank you so much for the work you're all doing, and let's keep it going.
Hi, everyone. Another NU employee, just for full transparency. I just wanted to also put a plug in for the arts. I took my children to Imagine You when they were young, and I, I really enjoyed that experience. The theater is really intimate, so you can get really close to the stage, which I think is really invaluable for, for young people. And I love that all third graders were able to attend, and I'd love to see that expanded. So I just wanted to hear, are there future plans for that expansion? And then, you know, we do have our Magnet School, our King Arts School, and that seems like a ripe opportunity to deepen that connection to the arts, and, and to really have that school be a jewel in terms of performing arts connections to, to the university. So just any ideas about expansion over the next few years?
Yes, there was a discussion about, you know, what grade level, and how do we make sure that every D-65 student has an opportunity to experience the arts, and not just through theater, but, you know, are there other arts programs at Northwestern that could also become partnerships, such as the, the LIT partnership? So there is, there is discussion. You know, there's some talk about, you know, at what grade levels would this happen? The selection of the productions is very strategic and discussed with the district as well. So yes, lots of opportunities, and we like to kind of start focused and really go deep in what we're doing, and then look at what our successes and challenges were, and then build from there. So yes, there's lots of discussion about how So, yes, there's lots of discussion about how it can grow and deepen along the way.
Gretchen's trying to get her question in.
Oh, that's okay. I, you know, I just had a question about that proposed stadium. No, I'm really just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. I couldn't let it go.
Oh, my goodness.
I actually do have substantive questions and Kristin, I want to say thank you so much. I was relatively new to the board when you arrived here, so it's been great that we still have you here and I really appreciate all the work you've done. I also want to say echoing what everybody has said, that all of the partnership work I think is wonderful and fabulous, but it's also not really the work of the board. I mean, I, I think our, our work is at a, at a sort of different level in terms of goal setting and accountability around goals. And I don't mean that we set your goals, we set our own goals. And I think the challenge for this partnership between the university and the school districts is figuring out where your interests intersect with our interests. And I think we've done that relatively well. And I'm, again, I'm putting aside sort of this partnership work, which is all these great things and there's a multitude of them and you highlighted many of them. I'm really talking about the NERA work. And the NERA work for me as a board member is, is critical to, to the work of our boards jointly. So, could we go back real quickly to the slide that had all the dots on it? Yeah, yeah, looks like dumb rose with an extra whatever. So, to me, this is the most important and it's something frankly that I think the boards could benefit from hearing more about. For example, just looking at this, I have absolutely no idea what those dots mean and, and what they signify. And I think some of them relate to 65, some relate to 202, and I don't know which is which, so you could maybe color code that. Not to micromanage your, your slide presentation, but for example, I mean, one of the very, very first things, if not the first thing, that this partnership was designed to do was to help us to evaluate the important changes we made in our freshman year humanities, where we eliminated tracks. And to be honest, I have no idea where that work ended up. The board, you know, took an important vote 12 years ago. We followed it up with another important vote around biology and components of those votes related to the evaluation of that work. And we were operating obviously on a handshake with Northwestern regarding the evaluation of those programs. So, obviously not tonight, I don't expect you to ad lib the status of that project, but I have no idea where it is, zero idea. And I, you know, I don't know who, who needs to communicate with who about that. And then the second really important example for me is, as an ETHS board member relates to the Portrait of a Graduate project. And that, we, we were all excited about. We had some work on this. I know David Figlio came and talked to us before he departed and I know he's departed and hopefully he's doing well in the snowy weather of wherever it was he ended up. But that Portrait of a Grad, I think we had some high expectations for it and I, I'm not sure it, it really yielded what we had hoped for, or at least not that I've heard of. So, I feel that there are these projects that start off with kind of a bang and we get all you guys here, but then, then they disappear and there's not a closure on it and there's not a sort of a resolution. And as a board, again, not to overstate my important status as a board member, along with my colleagues here, that's really what we're here to do. And we, we will applaud all of the other things you do, but you know, I'm not going to get in there and tell you that, you know, we need some sort of creative arts program. It's just not my thing. It's, it's not my expertise, clearly. So, I don't know if you want to chime in. I'm not really looking for, you know, the whole.
No, so I think, actually I think you're, it's an area that we're actually about to focus on in NERA is the communication. So, oftentimes when we're doing technical assistance, so I'll say, I do projects when I'm doing them as my research projects, then it's really my responsibility of how I'm communicating that, getting it out in journals and things like that. But when we do technical assistance, if I think about the reams of work that we did for the SAP, so much of that is not communicated out. And so, I think part of what we might need to do is be clear when we enter into partnerships, how it should be communicated out and where does it sit in the website? Because oftentimes we're not, it's not for us to put out the products of those things, it's to bring them back to you. And so, maybe what might be where some of these things are done, but the communication of them or making them available. So, what we can probably do is take that chart, be clear about what those projects are and maybe have an internal place where the, where they, where you understand where the, where, where they sit. And then I think it's a conversation with us and, and you of how to communicate when they, when they end. Because I know some of them are definitely done and we feel that they've been completed, but we're not going to, you know, go and say, hey, here's what it is, that's something that has to happen here. So, let's try to close that loop and figure out the communication. And we now have someone on our team whose job is to lead all of that communication. So, I think that's an easy one for us to take responsibility in having some communication on where these things sit.
Relatedly though, I would say that there also needs to be this, are we, are you satisfying yourself? And I remember having these conversations with David, that the research fits your area of expertise, the, the, the needs of your own Northwestern students who may be involved and what they need exposure to. All of your internal needs, how, how are your internal needs matching up with our internal needs? And, 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 you know, so that we're not missing each other and that we're connecting in a, in a way that meets the expectations at least of the board members with our administrators, who are really the experts.
Well, I think that's the big challenge. I know as part of David Figlio's vision for NERA before, it's a little bit like a matchmaking sort of process. So, you have faculty at the School of Education, Social Policy, who have very particular research expertise and they work within certain intellectual communities and they publish in certain journals and they have a reputation in that domain. And they want to further that project. They want to continue this work at the same, and so, to what extent can we find, can we take those interests and that expertise and match it with the needs of the community and so on? And that's not an easy thing. I'm actually, coming into this, I was really kind of amazed at first to see how often these successful matches were sort of put together. And I think it's a tribute to NERA. I mean, that's kind of what NERA is here to do in a sense. It's a little bit like a matchmaking service. We know what kind of the community needs are, the particular kinds of issues that arise in youth-serving organizations in Evanston. And then we know what the expertise of the faculty are and we try to like work it out and develop the protocols such that this research can be done efficiently. Nicole mentioned communication. That's a big, that's a big issue. And I think it's been something that we have not done at real well going for, in the past and want to improve. I mean, we've recently hired somebody who's going to help us more with this, but communicate, not just communicating what comes out of this work, you know, with, say, within a scholarly community or to our students and so forth, but, but also with Evanston and with the community and so forth. And, yeah, I think that's been a challenge.
But I will say that I, I believe that so many of the projects that are going on right now, I mean, just saying what you were saying, Kristin, that there is a synergy. And speaking as a faculty member, so many of us are working in collaboration. I mean, oftentimes these new classes that we, we might think about them as partnership, but those sit at the center of those faculty members' work and is what they're known for nationally and really trying to figure out how to bring that into the classroom, not just in a way that brings together college students and high school students. I think it's at the core, that was research for them also. And so, I think particularly in CESP, when many of us are in learning sciences, that our work is about really being in the communities and, and having been other places, it's so rare to be able to do that by, in 10 minutes away from where you live. For me, it's only two minutes away, I can actually walk over here. So, I think you're going to see a lot more of that. There's so much going on. The SAP has opened up, Amplify Black Voices Survey. There's so many things that are going on right now that I think not just CESP faculty, but Northwestern faculty are very much entwined in things that are going on in the school district, but also in the community-based organizations. We also mentioned that we're working very much to bring community-based organizations into the, into the conversation, not just, but into a collective conversation. So, not just us talking to the Y, but us in conversation with the Y in the library and the park districts, trying to figure out a holistic thing. So, that's come from here and the push with many of the leaders here. I think we're being very, I think what you're going to see, the productivity, increased productivity in that space.
And I just want to say that, and thank you Nicole for that, Dr. Pinker for that. We have been very energized and inspired by the matchmaking that, that has happened with NERA, with the faculty in CESP and our own research interest and the needs here at ETHS, especially as it relates to race and discipline and so many other topics that really inform our practice and what we say our practices in our, in our work here in the district. And so, I am just excited about more opportunities to actually share that research and all of that that is happening with the board and with the community, because it does have a direct impact on our students. And it's been very, very good, very, very good matchmaking, very good work, very good synergy. And I'm, I'm really loving the work that we've been doing with NERA.
I think as, as we talk about community, community partnerships and reaching out to the, to the community and, and really becoming a part of our community, then this is really what we're talking about. We're talking about not just isolating ETHS or isolating the schools, but recognizing that the schools are a part of the community. So, we, we, we have to and should be a part of all of, of what's happening. So, I thank you for planning and thinking about how to find a central space or a central place that we can keep and hold this information and go back to it and review it and make those connections, because those connections are, are just going to happen. And looking forward to what you're going to do is you reach out to other agencies in our community. Monique.
No, Maya. No. I was just going to add, you know, I'm, I'm really just so impressed and so blown away by all of the ways that you're partnering with both of our districts and just so happy to see all of the programs that are happening. And, you know, even for students to just have exposure to Northwestern through any of these programs, I think can make a big difference. You know, whether that's elementary, middle or high school, I think we, we can't underestimate that either. And just being able to, like, wouldn't it be wonderful if every student who goes through our districts has at least some exposure during their time in 65 or 202, so that they could have just an opportunity to see more about what the college experience is about or even to meet people and start developing networks? Because that alone can, can broaden horizons in so many ways.
And, and Maya, that is the connector to equity and excellence, right? So, that is a goal. That is our goal here at ETHS. And, and I'm recognizing after being here eight years that the players have changed. Kristin, I think you and Dr. Pinker, you came later on, but this whole row is different. You all are different and we have a different superintendent. And, and yet and still the partnership still exists. I know very well that it's hard to stay on the same page and continue to partner because priorities change, the world around us is changing, a pandemic occurs, you know, all those things that can pull us apart, but yet and still we're still here. You're still trying to figure out how to deal with the major issues we have at ETHS, right? To help us not only create that exposure, which is huge for our students, but also, yeah, they don't get to see some of this all the time, right? And I know from experience that the instructors that are coming to the YMCA to help support the program that we have look like them. And, and so that is, that's huge. And I would say you have opportunity to do more, you know, without a doubt, because we have more things that need attention. And so, I'm, you know, I'm just hopeful that, that you use this relationship and this, this new leadership that's up here to really deepen what we need for our students so that we can all be satisfied with the relationship, because we, we won't be satisfied until we reach, you know, our ultimate goal of all our students achieving. So, that's what we're hoping we can gain from this knowledge, right? But thank you.
Right. Well, thank you again. Thank you for coming. Thank you for sustaining, being a part of this. Thank you so much. So, the next item on our agenda is the report on literacy and the new curriculum. And we have some more folks coming to the table.
All right, good evening. We're here to provide an update on literacy. It's a joint effort, so we're going to start with Stacy and District 65 is going to take it. And we have an esteemed group of panelists here today.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Beavis. Good evening, I'm Dr. Stacy Beardsley. Tonight, District 65 and District 202 will provide a brief update on our literacy work. This is a reflection of what was provided in the memo. I will give a high-level overview of District 65 literacy performance for the boards and then speak to three areas of focus for improving literacy outcomes before handing over to District 202. And my clicker, there we go, sorry, should have looked up. All right. I'm going to move us right on. All right, in District 65, our literacy performance over time, as measured by NWA, has remained flat without significant shifts in either direction. This slide captures the percent of students meeting the SAT College Readiness Benchmark in reading as defined by NWA on the MAP Growth Assessment, which is taken by our third through eighth graders three times a year. The data spans five years and four assessments due to the fact that we did not administer the MAP Assessment in the spring of 2020. The level of performance is consistent and flat over time regardless of the NWA measure reviewed. This includes students meeting or exceeding the 50th percentile or if we look at the ACT College Readiness Benchmark, which is also defined by NWA. As you can see at the bottom of the slide, we have set new aggressive performance targets for the five-year duration of our current strategic plan, which will require a shift in upward performance. The Illinois Assessment of Readiness, or IAR, which is one of our one-time-a-year state assessment given in March, tells a slightly different story. The assessment is an assessment of grade level proficiency and has one of the most rigorous sets of expectations for grade level proficiency across the United States. The level of performance required to demonstrate proficiency is higher in Illinois than most states in the country. This assessment indicates that 40.5% of our District 65 students met or exceeded the Illinois expectations for grade level proficiency in ELA. You also note in that image that they've, actually in the next slide, we'll do some comparison to state. The level, sorry. Yep. This, I'm sorry. So, the assessment indicated that 40.5% of the District 65 students met or exceeded the Illinois expectations. This was almost a six percentage point increase from the 21, 2021 data. So, we are excited about that, yet... Yet it does not yet meet or exceed the district pre-pandemic reading performance as measured by I A R in the spring of twenty nineteen, when forty-three point eight percent of the students met or exceeded I A R proficiency markers. Two grades have rebounded to pre-pandemic performance levels, but that is not the case in the remaining grade levels. Our current attainment levels on the I A R Reading or English Language Arts Assessment, which is the name that the state of Illinois uses for the assessment, continue to have a consistent achievement or opportunity gap across racial and ethnic groups and do not put us on track to achieve these five-year goals. This diagram is provided by Isby School, Illinois School Report Card, and captures the I A R twenty twenty-two performance in English Language Arts, comparing average performance levels in District sixty-five for black students, Hispanic students and white students. And the band indicates the range or the difference between the average performance across groups. This was included in the memo. District sixty-five has set aggressive goals which require deep work to drive improved performance. The memo outlined three areas of focus for literacy improvement. The first area of work, strengthening educator knowledge and instructional practices for teaching literacy. I'll briefly highlight two of the efforts that were included in the memo, but do not want to devalue or ignore some of the other important efforts that are happening. All are important and impactful work. District sixty-five currently has fifty-six educators from three schools engaged in letters training. The leadership teams for these schools also engaged in the administrator training this summer and are providing ongoing supports for this effort. This course is generally completed over a two-year period and is focused on development of evidence-based literacy practices with a primary focus in our kindergarten through third grade bands. Our schools are providing time during professional learning blocks and educators are committing time beyond the workday to complete the training. This course supports educators and learning practices that will apply regardless of the instructional material that the district selects. We plan to offer a second cohort of letters training next year. The second effort that I want to acknowledge within this capacity building strand is the improving reading of older students, which we refer to as I R O S. This professional learning series is built by Achieve the Core and is facilitated by the school-based instructional coaches in seven schools with fifty-six educators engaged. The course is specifically designed to provide educators with practices that can support reading development for our older students. The second area of work or focus that we have on the slide up there is focused on the quality of literacy instructional materials with a primary focus in our kindergarten through fifth grade. District sixty-five is excited to be engaging with educators, leaders and community in a process of identifying new instructional materials for kindergarten through fifth grade. Specifically, D sixty-five is looking for curricular materials that support a clear and equitable vision for excellent literacy instruction and are aligned to the research base in Scarborough's Reading Rope. As a part of this work, we've been and will continue to build a team of champions who can support communication and build investment district-wide. We are also focused on developing an intentional adoption and implementation plan, including what it will take to use and support the materials well to set teachers up for success. The group that's working on this is a group of fifteen educators with a second team that is operating on an advisory and these folks have been diving into the materials during the day and on weekends to really get a deep and comprehensive understanding in order to inform our selection. The third area of work that's called out in this slide is focused on the development of programs within and beyond the school day to support literacy development. These are areas of work beyond our tier-one classroom instruction for all students. And so the capacity building pieces I just spoke to and the instructional materials are part of our all-student experience. These are things that reach, that are in addition to that experience. This includes work that is done by our academic interventionists, who are currently working with three hundred and ninety-seven students across seventeen schools, delivering small group and individual interventions. It also includes our academic skill centers, who have served twelve hundred students this year with forty-four tutors and our high dosage tutoring model. Our goal is to serve two thousand students. Students engage in a nine-week tutoring session with at least three sessions per week in a small group format. The work is built on last year's success where we saw fifty-eight percent of our students meet their math tutoring stretch goal and fifty-six percent of the students meet their reading tutoring stretch goal. This was measured by the I Ready Assessment, which is core to our high dosage tutoring program. Last are our summer learning opportunities, where we are providing over a thousand seats for learning this summer. Partnership is key to quality summer programming and for our summer learning. And we thank the McGaw Y M C A, District two oh two and Redwood Literacy for their partnerships around some of our anchor programs. I am now going to hand over to Dr. Beavis.
Thank you, Dr. Beardsley. So at the last District two oh two board meeting, we reported on a study we did looking at reading scores over time specific to the S A T. And we found that reading scores were flat. They held steady. They didn't decrease, but they didn't go up. And while there's variation in scores, we used the ANOVA test of significance to determine if the differences between the cohorts on these measures are meaningful. And we found that there was no statistical differences across subgroups for grad cohorts of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. The twenty twenty-one cohort did not take the S A T. That was the year we were out for COVID during that time. And that data is in your report. Just the next slide talks about the performance levels on E L A and that's going to lead into the next slide. So the state sets our E L A scores similar to the way they set the I A R scores. It's a very high bar. You'll see that to meet standards in the E L A, English Language Arts requires a five forty or higher and that bar is set by the state. So in the E L A meets exceeds category, we looked at that. This is a parallel slide to the I A R. And what we see is we looked at white students, Latino, Hispanic students and black students. And essentially you see the same graph playing out across years. So that's new to our board, but that's publicly available. That's in the school report card. And I think for transparency's sake, it's always good to look at things that are on the school report card as part of this conversation and that's what we've done tonight. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry Success and Dr. Kiwana Brown, if we could just pass that down. And they will provide further update.
Hello, everyone. Jerry Success, Director of Academic Supports. I'm here to present, I'm in the Academic Supports Department and we're doing great things in the Academic Supports, mainly in literacy, which is one of the things that I oversee. So as you can see up there, we have some bullet points of many events that we've done and most of them in collaboration with District sixty-five. So our first event, what we did in September was E-Town Community Lit Fest. This event took place outside on the tennis course where it was open and free to the Evanston community, where we had food vendors. And more importantly, we welcomed families and gave away free books that were geared towards elementary and middle school. And we also had several District sixty-five teachers come out to support us and work with us. So it was nice for the students to not only see us at E T H S and also see teachers from District sixty-five as well. The next one were book pop-ups. We had two book pop-ups recently. One was at Little Beans Cafe where the literacy team, members of the literacy team and I went out, Little Beans Cafe, and in conjunction with Black History Month, we ordered over about a hundred seventy-five books to give away. Again, meet and greet families to give away. And there were many District sixty-five families and students as well. I reached out to two childcare programs and D A R S came by with about fifteen students. They walked over to Little Beans. Again, we met them and gave away free books as well. The second one just took place last week at Fleetwood Jordan Community Center. So we partnered with Fleetwood Jordan as well as Family Focus. Again, they came, brought students over. We introduced ourselves and told them the importance of literacy. So members of the team sat there, had good, quick, good conversations about the books we laid out and why they would choose certain books. Again, it was a nice turnout. Both events, we had about forty to sixty kids. In addition, we left boxes of books for both Fleetwood and Family Focus as well. And we have coming up in April, we have Family Literacy Night. It's going to take place April twenty-sixth in the Field House. So we also promoted that night. We had flyers. Every kid who got a book, we said, you get a book and a flyer to take home. So we're hoping to, at this event, again, we're going to give away free books and expose many students to written texts by various authors. And we have three authors, local Evanston authors lined up. One is a teacher at Oakton. He wrote a kid's book, a friend of mine. So he's going to come out along with two other authors to sign books, talk to the kids, do games, and we're going to give away their signed copies, copied books as giveaways. In our literacy lab, right now, we service about fifty-five to sixty students. And these students are referred to the Lit Lab and vary in terms of abilities and grade levels. Do students have one-on-one interventions by teachers who are certified reading specialists or endorsed in reading? And it's always nice to see making great connections with the kids as they come in. And I don't work with them directly, but I meet them and tell them, I'm from District sixty-five. So it's always a nice connection when I say, hey, I know your principal. I know your teacher where you went. So that's always a nice connection to see. And it's also good when we see the kids. The point is for them to come in, to get the interventions, to get assessed every six weeks. And when the kids leave, not only are we happy to see them leaving where they no longer be in our service, but a lot of kids ask to stay. They're like, okay, I know I met my goals, but can I come back? We're always open and always welcome them. So that's always nice to see as well.
And I'll just speak really quickly about Summer Lift. And we've discussed Summer Lift a few times. And this summer was our third year of Summer Lift, our fourth year of offering the summer program for E T H S and two, I mean, and D sixty-five students. So this summer, we had roughly forty-two students to attend. And hats off to Dr. Beardsley, who collaborated with us to, and developed the platform for us to be able to register D sixty-five students much more easily than previously. And we had probably close to seventy kids from D sixty-five who were interested, but we have limited capacity. So we were able to take about thirty-eight students from D sixty-five, which was great. And in addition to the students, we had five D sixty-five teachers who also worked our Summer Lift program. So this was the first time we were able to actually have D sixty-five teachers become part of that program too. So that was amazing. And just from working with the kids this summer, there were lots of ups and downs this summer, actually. So our growth was still good considering we had a couple of teachers out with COVID simultaneously, students. So it was a lot of just kind of the COVID thing. But the students still showed an overall growth of about one point three years, which is still good considering it's a fifteen-day intensive, literacy-intensive program. And we're used to our numbers being higher, but we understood that the COVID played a huge factor in this summer for all of us. So we were thankful to be able to have that one point three years of growth. And we have some great kids that we're looking forward to seeing again this summer. So Summer Lift, we're looking forward to that collaboration again.
Yeah, if I could just say one thing, the picture up there is from Family Focus. And shout out to Philinda Coleman and Liz Bramley, who work closely together to order the books. And those are the students who attend Family Focus after school as well as Fleetwood Jordan came over and they all were excited to get free books. And in conjunction with Summer Lift this year, Camp Kumba is up there. It's a program here at E T H S. So we're partnering with them. So once registration is completed, the goal is to have our kids of color to go from Summer Lift, which goes from nine to twelve for the students, and then they'll go right downstairs outside to participate in Camp Kumba. And there's, and parents are registering now. So we don't have the numbers that's starting this summer, but we hope to have that soon to know exactly how many kids, not only will we have in Summer Lift, but how many of our Summer Lift kids will participate in conjunction with Camp Kumba as well.
And so just to speak a little bit more on some of the things we're doing within two oh two that also benefits kids coming from D sixty-five and two two oh two is our Tier Two Reading Course. This service, this is an intervention course that services many of our students who come into the district, need an additional reading support. This is our flexible grouping course. So students come into the course based off of their MAP scores. So we look at the best of their reading MAP score. And students who place between a two, ten and below are placed into this course, but it's a flexible grouping. So within it, they're able to move through different tiers of support. We tier them so that they are offered different levels of support as they climb up the reading ladder, the literacy ladder. So we start with the decoding for students who need, who still need some of those foundational decoding skills. And then they also move into vocabulary and then comprehension within those. And fluency is embedded within all three of those components. And we've seen great growth with our students there. And a lot of the kids who are in this support tend to also want to be a part of the literacy lab if their schedules allow. So that's amazing that they actually are engaging in that type of support voluntarily. The literacy lab is a voluntary support. We don't require kids to be a part of the literacy lab because we want them to be invested in their education just as much as we are. And a lot of the kids who are receiving that support in the reading support want to be a part of the literacy lab. So that's an amazing support that we offer. In addition to that, something that's new this year is our transdisciplinary biology course. So this course is one of a two-year sequence for science. In the past few years, we haven't offered biology for our incoming freshmen. But this is for our freshmen who come in, who still need reading support, who scored between the two eleven and two twenty in reading on MAP, but they're now able to take this course in biology. And in this course, there's a reading teacher and there's also a biology and chemistry teacher. So the first year the kids are in this course, they're taking the transdisciplinary biology, which is also embedded in literacy strategies. So they read different texts that's surrounded around the components of biology and chemistry. And then it rolls into their second year sequence where they are also able to complete the sequence with chemistry. They don't have to do the second year. They can go into a regular chemistry, honors chemistry, however they are performing at that time. But this is exciting for us because the students are really excited about it. We actually had twice as many kids enrolled as we have capacity for. So we're looking for, you know, some plan there. But yeah, we're really excited about this too. All right, questions?
Okay, Gretchen.
Thanks. So I just want to sort of cut to the chase here because it seems like rather than having a joint report tonight, we have sort of side-by-side reports. I don't want to say separate, but side-by-side. And I think it's pointing out for those of us on the boards, once again, the difficulty we face in the various testing systems that we have to come to grips with. You know, sort of the state standards, the national standards, multiple national standards, different state standards, sort of K through eight standards, high school standard, you know, all these things, none of which I'm an expert in. But again, from where I sit on a school board, we're supposed to be in this role about setting goals and holding both ourselves and the district accountable for meeting them. So what strikes me in looking at these two side-by-side reports is that we're sending a really, really confusing message to our community. Parents looking at these reports side-by-side are not going to understand what it is that their kid is striving for. And part of that is because kids who go through the K through eight District sixty-five system are going to be compared to a set of standards, which they may well meet, others won't, but many will. They'll then arrive at the door of the high school and they're not going to be doing anything different, nothing better or worse. But all of a sudden, they're not meeting standards because we're using a different bar. And I don't know how to reconcile this, me alone. how to reconcile this, me alone, but I think this is the work of our boards and our two districts. We need to figure this out because we have too many kids arriving at E T H S who can't read at grade level. We've had to create classes so that we can expose them to the science that I would argue they're certainly entitled to be exposed to, but we have to create a class where they're getting reading support in the class in order to tackle the science, right? And, and I think that's terrific, creative, and it's, it's a necessary strategy. But wouldn't the better strategy be that they're reading at a higher level when they come in the door? Um, so I, I really think we've got some hard stuff to confront here, and I'm not sure that side-by-side reports like this advance that. And I know you don't have the answer to, that's more of a statement. Um, but my question is, relatedly, um, not at our fall joint board meeting, but at last spring's joint board meeting, we got from, um, the, the administration of both districts, much to, I think, the applause of almost everybody who was sitting on the board at the time, and I know there's a new member, too. You put your heads together, came up with this really complicated scatter plot thing, um, a, a way to reconcile some of these dueling standards so that we could all then proceed from a place where we could better understand where we, where we are going forward. Um, and I see no evidence of that. Um, and I'm, I'm just wondering, uh, what happened to that? And wasn't the point of that to try and advance my earlier point?
I'll say this again. I've been saying it. Um, we set goals in our district that are actually more rigorous than what we've had in the past by using I A R, which is a scary word, um, that we, that everyone went away from, uh, when we were using, uh, set of standards across the country that most states dropped. Illinois stayed courageous. Uh, and according to N W E A, we have the highest set of standards in K through eight across the country, the state of Illinois does. So we're measuring off I A R, uh, which I think there's a continuous discussion around, um, should we have ACT, SATs, college readiness, college readiness benchmark, or I A R? And we're actually, we look at all three. But I think the greater conversation here, as I'm hearing, um, the presentations tonight, is that we are, we will, it's impossible to catch every single student one year, one year and a half post a pandemic. That makes it very challenging. And we're looking at the work that has to happen at both the high school as well as D sixty-five to be able to lift the practices. One thing that I will own in our district that we have, uh, that Dr. Beers is leading right now, is that we have been using a, uh, resource slash curriculum that does not teach the science of reading. So we're currently in the process of adopting a new curriculum. So it's a lot of factors that go into that. But again, I think of twelve years or thirteen years of using, going with the joint literacy, um, we have never solved it. Um, even last year, there were challenges with trying to make that make sense. What we decided to do in sixty-five was to stick to aligning our work to the state standards of I A R, which is the most rigorous set of standards between the three, and we'll continue to, on that path. We're also in more partnerships that are a lot, a lot deeper ingrained with two-oh-two than we've ever been. Um, you'll hear some conversations in our, with our board meetings and committees of the whole, the work that we're doing in partnership around Avid, um, the partnerships with our college and career counseling pieces. There's a lot of pieces, a lot of work that we can just talk about that's happening in our district that, to be honest, in, in this meeting, it wouldn't be enough time. Um, and we're thankful for two-oh-two. There's work that, that they're doing. And I just have a question. So when we talk about Tier Two students for that program, the second one, how many, how many students from, from, that were freshmen that's, that's enrolled in that program, uh, that you, well, would describe me?
For the biology one, or?
No, the, uh, the reading program, uh.
So that one roughly has about seventy-five students?
Seventy-five students, and we send about eight hundred students to the, to you all, seven hundred roughly?
Mm-hmm.
So about seventy-five in that program in that Tier Two. That's some pretty good data to say that. And, and is that, is that option, or do, do they go in because of their scores?
They go in because of their scores. And there's two different levels. So there's the one where the students are able to take the biology now.
Yeah.
Um, and though, that's not optional either, because they're still within, they're still below that two-twenty cutoff.
Yeah.
And there's about sixty students in that one.
So out of, so if you're doing them half, that's ten percent, eleven percent of the students?
About ten percent, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on Dr. Horton's comments, uh, I, I do recall that, um, as collective boards that we had discussed, uh, moving away from the narrow joint literacy and, and developing broader goals for assessing, um, literacy across both districts, uh, it seems like we are moving toward that with these, uh, different, um, approaches and reports. Um, and I just wanted to speak specifically to the District sixty-five initiatives because that's what I know best, but, um, I, I'm really excited about both the, the letters training and the new curriculum that we'll be, we'll have on board. I think those are critical, right? That, and all the other stuff that's happening outside of the classroom, the academic skills center, Summer Lift, those are all really important supports. But what really we need to get right is what's happening in the classroom, right, with instructional practice and curriculum and the in-class supports, right? So I'm, I'm really glad that we have those things and that we're moving in those directions. Um, the, the question I had was, um, when David Wartowski, uh, presented on the math update, um, there was a detail in that that really excited me, and he did provide additional details about identifying instructors who were able to, um, increase student progress much more than other instructors were able to, right? That they were able to see that they were able to move their students much more than, than the average, um, within that grade, um, and that they were looking to those instructors for best practices. And I was really excited by that. And I asked for more details, like what practices? Um, and I think the details was, was in the social emotional piece, right? That they created classrooms that, um, were nurturing and caring and where students felt seen. Um, so I'm wondering if there are ways or, or plans to have a similar, like, measure, right, a tracking, right, where those instructional, um, efforts are really effective so that we can replicate that, right, across classrooms? So I'll just say, I'm, I'm really, that's the piece that I'm really interested in is the instructional effectiveness piece.
No, I appreciate the question. And currently, we are, and David's taking the first stab at this, thinking about where most, the most promising practices are within the district to elevate that. And then we're gonna look at the opportunities to kind of learn from that and also identify instructors that can also help to support growth and development through their own promising practices in literacy and other areas. But David is kind of the person who's taken this on first. Um, and I appreciate the first round of comments, too, because really, the key elements to getting our Tier One instruction right, which is this idea of kind of lifting overall performances, about getting the right materials in the hands of educators that have, are having their capacity built in strong and appropriate research-based manners. And so both I R O S and letters, our trainings that have been developed outside, are strongly grounded in science of reading practices. Skarsberg's rope is really the way we're thinking about this and approaching the different angles of literacy. Um, and the dedication of our educators really dig in and do this learning, both as facilitators of the learning and recipients of the learning has been outstanding.
And there's a lot of reading in the math curriculum, too, if I remember. So that's encouraging.
And we, and we understand that literacy, you know, there really is, you know, the ability to crack the code is absolutely essential across our disciplines.
Yeah.
And so I appreciate, you know, it's, you know, I think a couple of aspects that we're hearing is like, that, uh, aspects that we're bringing to the table here is we had some very solid work that we need to do in K two, K three, K five. And then there are spaces where we're doing the collaboration around Tier Two and Tier Three, both in summer and beyond that Tier One. And those are very good places for us to be talking and collaborating and working together.
Thank you.
So, so there's three things I've heard tonight that I'm already very, very excited about. One is the use of the I A R and that high bar. I applaud that because that, that complements the high bar that is being set for the high school, um, at five-forty for the SAT, uh, and even higher in math. It's an even higher bar in math. The second thing I heard that I was really excited about, uh, was that, that, that K two space, right? That, that, that really revitalizing the curriculum, the reading curriculum there. And the third thing I've heard, and I've been going to these meetings longer than almost everybody, is that I finally got a question about math at a joint meeting. I've been waiting like fourteen years. Um, and that brings me to my bridge. And I, I think, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about literacy, but we have a numeracy issue. And if you saw my last board report, it, it's at the high school, it's living at the high school, and it's living in elementary and middle school. And anything we can do to talk about what we're doing for numeracy, what we're doing so that kids can acquire those skills and be fluent in numeracy, uh, with, with very exciting instruction. Um, we, I updated the board, uh, around the issue, our board last, last time. And I also talked about our data science class, uh, which, which is, is super exciting. Uh, but anything that we're doing along those lines, I think that we could showcase in future meetings, and just having discussions about mathematics instruction. I mean, we talk about it. Stacy and I talk about it with David and with Dale Liebforth. Uh, but really, to elevate that to the board level is, is really something that I'm very excited to, to hear. Uh, and, and that, along with the I A R and, and the work on the K two space, I think is, is really great. And, um, happy to, to, to sit at this table for another fourteen years now. I'm re, I'm re-energized.
So can we, can we see something? Can we see, like, some kind of study about, um, the, about math? Yes. Yeah, yeah. What happens? How we can look at acceleration or not? You know, what's the, what's the?
I think, I think.
What's gonna happen?
I think looking at all different, uh, you know, monitoring math achievement, looking at the I A R, looking at the SAT, kind of looking at what we've done, looking at cohort strength, looking at what's changed in those cohorts, instructionally, what we're doing different. Um, but also, you know, yes, sure, we could look at, um, what the benefits are of, of our detracking efforts. We could also look at, um, our acceleration practices. We're accelerating students in geometry over the summer for the first time ever. Uh, I'm not gonna lie, that's a challenge.
Yeah.
Um, but, but we're up to it. Got a great group of folks working on it. Uh, but it's, it's a work in progress, too. Um, you know, and it's gonna be, you know, our, our agreement was to make it, you know, and, and to make this a very worthwhile curriculum, but also to recognize and realize that geometry is not too algebra. Too algebra is extraordinarily fast-paced and requires a foundation and fluency within algebra. So all this kind of comes together in a perfect way to be able to say, we'll have more to share on this, and we could do it in a, in a very systematic kind of way next time. Uh, but I'm, I'm just tickled pink. I love this. This is great.
I, I love that you got excited about that. That's fantastic. Um, my question is, um, where is the urgency?
Where's the urgency?
Where, where is the urgency? Um, and before you try to answer that, um, I believe that when you know better, you do better, and good ideas don't have to be sold to anybody. We're, we looked at statistical data. It's kind of been the same. You talked about it being flat. Um, we also have, Pete, as you mentioned, uh, using, uh, the Illinois School Report Card, there is a lot of culture and climate data on there from the Five Essential Survey for both schools. Um, program coherence in the ambitious instruction, uh, section, teacher influence in the ambitious instruction section, collective responsibility in the collaborative teacher section, and instructional leadership are just four of the areas that probably will change before the statistics will. And I think we're probably looking at the wrong data first to see what will change. Cause I think when our educators feel successful, they will tell us on the survey that asks them, how do you feel about your work? Um, and I think I'm glad we're, we're looking at the reading program, you know. Back when I was a principal, we did that like seven years ago. So that's my, like, where is the urgency? Um, I get that we have to manage change. I get there was a pandemic. I get all of that. Um, but our kids only get one school experience. Um, and it is, um, like Gretchen, I, I get what you were saying. Um, it's, it's frustrating, and we gotta figure out what's, what's next, whether it's a joint goal, whether we have to incorporate other domains. Um, I, I don't really care as much as we develop a system that has collective responsibility for the work. And people, parents, students, and teachers alike, when we ask them about how they feel about the work, tell us that they feel connected to it. And they're telling us year after year that they feel like our systems are weak in those areas. Um, and that has to change, and that has to change before the, the test scores will change. Um, and, you know, I filled out four or five essential surveys this year. You're welcome. Um, and, uh, you know, how I feel about it isn't really as proximate to the problem as how the teachers feel about it, right? Teacher voice matters. Teacher influence matters. Um, and we have things that are measuring that. And it's a, it's a, whether you like the survey or not, it's, uh, it is absolutely functional, absolutely tells information. It sits side-by-side with the statistical data on that report card. Um, and I would love to see us pairing how we're bringing people along. When I read the memos, I see a lot of attention on influencing teacher capacity, right? Training people. That's great. Getting new curriculum, that's great. That's different than making sure and holding everybody accountable for using the curriculum, for making sure that there is alignment in the program vertically and horizontally in buildings and across the system, um, that leads to this building. Um, and it's, it is critical that, that we do that and that we do it well. And so I'll come back to, you know, where is the urgency? Um, I think I read in the memo that we're buying materials this spring. Um, I would love to see how we're not just getting the materials, but putting them to use. What are the non-negotiables for educators in the classroom to use them? How are we taking away all the things we don't want them to use anymore, right? And cleaning house and making sure that we only have the right things in front of children? Um, and if it's right for kids because it's research-based and it works for our children, they won't need to be sold. They will feel more successful doing it, and they'll wanna do more of it, right? Um, I mean, I, I believe that will be the case. Um, otherwise, they'll just have new materials, and they'll tell us that our systems are weak. Um, and I hope we don't continue to, to live that cycle. So I don't think there will probably be an answer for the, where the urgency question is. Um, it's probably more of a statement, but I think it's important that we add some data points to look at as we do this work to make sure that we're not just making the people that are in the know on the decision-making, right? We have committees that do this work, so we have educators involved. I'm not worried about the people that raise their hand to volunteer. I'm worried about everybody else, right? Um, and how they feel about coming along and, uh, and feeling good about the work, too.
Yeah. I think, um, there's a lot in those comments, Joey, but I'll just speak to a couple of different things, and I'll try to work backwards. Um, in regards to materials, we are, the committee will be making a recommendation around the material to purchase end of March, beginning to April, beginning of April. That work will, there will be also essentially kind of a plan for professional learning, as well as a plan for implementation and monitoring of that material and the shift in instructional practices. Because part of what we're trying to frame with our points tonight is, there is, there's capacity building. There's what do I learn, what do I unlearn? And that work's already begun. That work, work really truly began last year, and we are, you know, with the use of letters and I R O S, as well as several other learning opportunities we have in the district, that's continued this year. And that really, and a lot of that work started with Dr. Turner and Director of Literacy role, helped to move folks into the space of like readiness for change. And our job now is to ensure that the material selection is made thoughtfully, and we land with, with a strong material, with a strong professional learning plan, and we do measure and monitor that work. In addition to the material selection, there's been engagement and, and work with the school leadership through the School Leadership Collaborative. So they're along with us in the process. There's a set, follow-up session on that later this week. Um, so we've really been trying to bring along multiple groups of stakeholders. We've been engaging with interventionists, instructional coaches. And so we are thinking about the change process and how to measure and monitor as we go. And we will be looking to kind of land that with the material recommendation later this school year. Um, the earlier portion of your comment around essentially urgency, what I heard you two bubbling up is, you know, there are multiple ways to solve a problem. Sometimes it's going directly at instruction, literacy practices. Another, another holding is what is the environment and the space where that learning is occurring? And I think in that space, I'd also just kind of complement the school's team. Each school writes a school improvement plan annually. They engage their school, their school teams, and there's a goal in there around academic improvement, as well as around learning environments. And that is where we incorporate our student voice and our panorama data. That's where we pull from our five E's data. And so you see schools specifically going at that. And we also are working with leaders later this week and just on thinking about triangulation of that data. We look at pieces, but how do we really get to the root cause of what that data is telling us? So we can be writing smart and sharp plans that can be moving areas and learning conditions, as well as student achievement.
And I would like to just add to that, connecting to what Dr. Beers just mentioned. We've been working on a few, um, instructional accountability systems in our, in our, in District sixty-five. So, starting with something led by Dr. Green with our collaborative calibration visits, where Central Office goes into the schools, and they're walking the buildings with their administrators and going into having classroom, having discussions around these instructional systems. Uh, we also have the learning walk, just led by Dr. Beersley, where they're taking deeper dives. Uh, school-selected topics, but we know curriculum will be one of the higher ends of that around E L A, uh, where we're actually going in with our directors. directors, with our coaches and things of that nature to support that. And then they're doing what Dr. Turner has principals doing, which is something really critical. They're doing, they're doing learning walks internally within that. And so we have, and then we have the reality checks where the accountability really comes to hold around what the data outcomes are looking as led by Dr. Griffin. So it's a lot of systems of accountability, but they are interconnected in order for us to get ready for what we're getting ready to deliver. And that's helping our teachers to really own the material, grow and develop and build a culture of growth for all of us. Cause no one just knows everything. We continue to have to get better. So we have those systems.
Thank you.
In terms of the joint space that we are occupying right now, I would love for us to think about how we make sure that the things we're investing in in District 65 are sustained, right? And continue to see success, right? So Stacy talked about, I've sat through a lot of curriculum policy meetings. We have 1,200 students that have done Academic Skills Center and we're really excited about the data coming out of that high dose tutoring, right? That there's some things that are really working about the way that's been set up. And that's in a pandemic, trying, and like trying to scale it up and staff it from the, you know, from the start within the last year and a half. And we're still seeing really great information coming out of that. I'd love for us to identify things like that, to say, now let's watch them freshman year, sophomore year, junior year, those kids that were having high success after Academic Skills Center, are they continuing to have success, right? Like what, what do we, you know, because I don't want us to keep at 65 investing in things that we think are really working and then they stall out when they come to the high school. Right? And so, you know, I think that there's probably some things that we're excited about in 65 that we think the math educators that were, you know, identified like, that were like, this is working, this is working. Okay, we're excited about this. If we could as joint, as a joint effort, track all of those, those, those specific things we identify and say, what does that look like by the time they get to junior year? And then if the answer is they're still doing great, right? Then we know that, okay, let's go invest even more in that in K through three or in five through eight. Like I think that that's a part that is missing from our joint efforts is making sure that we can say, these are sustainable success intervention, successful interventions. Here's what it looks like at the K through eight level. Here's what it looks at the high school level. You know, and then we, then we can keep kind of having a feedback loop of like, okay, this is how it worked for sixth graders. Maybe you all can, you know, consider what you have in that space and is it, is it gonna continue that? Or do we need to, you know, you know, we talked about face liaisons at the city schools, right? That's working very well right now. So that's something that the high school is gonna, gonna consider, you know, having in the same way. So I, I'd love for us to, to have a list, whether it's from you all or, you know, I don't know who exactly makes this list of like, here's the things that we think are making a difference. Let's, let's track it, right? Let's, let's pay attention to it for a six-year period, an eight-year period, a 10-year period. I know that's way too slow for all of us. I'm not trying to say that's not about the urgency, but I just, I, I think that we often kind of hand off folks and then, then becomes your data and it's no longer our data. And it, you know, I, I think there needs to be some things that we're thinking about in the, in the longitudinal view. And, and I think it's very difficult for us as we look at, you know, significant numbers to really understand what is causing growth and celebrate those things. And then as boards, our decisions are to invest in those things and make sure we're getting the right tools in the right hands so that, that these can be sustained as they go into the high school. So I, I would love for us to say, you know, Stacy, you identify three or four things that you're like, we're particularly psyched about. We think it really worked. We think we're sending you a class of, you know, students that has, is in a better position than they were four years ago. Can you watch it and make sure that that's actually true? So that we can, you know, think of that whole like portrait of a graduate from pre-K through 12.
Sounds like a project for NIRA.
Doesn't it?
A longitudinal study.
I was just gonna say that.
They're not in the room.
I was just gonna say that.
But that was, that was a project of NIRA like six years ago, looking at sustained, sustained success metrics. And they were gonna backwards map experiences to those metrics. But like, we don't know where that went.
Right.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
But there is a lot of joint data that is tracked, that's comparable, right? From discipline data to.
Right. Making sure that gets into all of the hands of folks that it needs to get to so that people, you know, in your positions aren't feeling like you have to reinvent the wheel and folks at the high school aren't feeling like, okay, we've got to start from the, you know, from nowhere with this, this particular intervention when it's like, oh, actually this, this group, this cohort of children responded really well to this. How do we make sure they're still getting something that is equivalent to that? Or how do we make sure that it, that we can feel confident that that was something that was working and sustainable?
This feels to me like the same conversation we have been having. We've, we've had this before. We did talk about NIRA, looking at these, these, these strategies, these benchmarks and, and tracking how students do. And so at the high school, we're, we're faced with freshmen. So what do, what do freshmen look like? When they come in, you know, you're saying that there are a number of freshmen that need support in order to take the basic science class. And so where, what are those kids like? Our question is, what are those kids? Where are those kids when they're in junior high? Where are they in their, their middle school years? The kids that come in, the literacy lab is great. I mean, I would hang out there if I could, if I had time, cause it's really just, it's great space. And you're, but you're saying that, that you've got more kids. Well, you said that for the science. You have more kids in science than you have capacity for. So, you know, I, I'm, I wondered when you said that, so what does that mean and what happens to those kids? Do they not get the support? Or I don't know. You can, you can kind of tell us that later. But I guess my big question is for the freshmen, when they come in, how many of those kids need to have support just to survive in high school? I mean, just to, to be here and survive in high school?
And, and Pat, if I can add, the, the piece that I'm thinking about is I think we all get kind of mired in like, yeah, but we did that six years ago, eight years ago, 10 years ago. I, I do think while there's some things that have not changed, the pandemic, entirely new administrations and incredible investments in equity should yield something different in the next three, four, or five years than they have in the last five. So I'm not sure that the way we were looking at that before is gonna really capture. My concern is that it'll, it'll feel flat. It'll feel like it's not changing if we, you know, continue to look at it the same way we've looked at it. I'd like to get much more granular and specific and say, this stuff happened in the last two and a half years. What's happening with it?
Well, this is, this is the, the articulation that needs to happen between the districts. And this articulation is important to happen, not necessarily at this table, but, and I, I know that the departments meet and talk. I know, I know the districts are talking. That's really where it needs to happen, not here.
Can I add? I think what has, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
What has really happened over the last couple of years in 65, we have built some systems that now we can help to track students through that. We can go, we can give you a cohort based on students who are in ASC, based on students who are now in our Avid program that can help do exactly what you're describing. I don't know what was prior. I don't know what we would have had to be able to give with just going off test scores, but we actually have some tier two interventions that allows us to really identify how they're matriculating into the high school. So those 70 students, a, a year from now, we would know who was in our ASC or, or whatever the other programs were to kind of do exactly that. So I think with, with that part probably not so clear in the past, it may have made it challenging.
I think this is much easier to do it the way you just described, Dr. Horton. And, and Biz, thank you so much. Because what that allows us to do is really say like, okay, here are the 100, here are the 200, here, whatever that number of kids is, here's the intervention we did. And we think it worked, right? That's what I'm hearing. Let's see what the impact is in the high school with that. How, does it last a year? Does it last two years? Does it change GPAs? Does it change test, whatever it is? Does it change attendance? You know, we, we know, one of the things we're looking at is work-based learning, right? Summer, summer work. And what's the impact that that has on student achievement? You know, if a student has a summer job, if a student, you know, what's the actual impact academically? We have a good, from the literature, we certainly know it increases attendance, increases GPA, increases graduation rates, right? But it would be very, you know, that's one of the things we want to be intentional in studying and we know who those kids are. We have that data. In the same way going forward, we're gonna have this information from 65 that's gonna help us be able to report back on that to y'all and say, hey, this worked. This was successful. Let's double down on this. Or this had an effect initially and then it kind of fell off or whatever in between, wherever that lands. But this is a conversation again, that I think the kind of conversation we should be having and, and that kind of work we should be doing, which is a lot more granular and, and more impactful than, than what we've done in the past, I think. So I, I appreciate that. And we do have a great opportunity here.
Well, I, I do recall, I feel like we've had that conversation, you know, where we've talked about, we actually know the students.
Yes.
And we, we said all that before. We know them. Let's narrow in on them. Let's figure out what those markers are so we can see the type of impact we're making. And I think we're all right. Things are different, right? We have, you know, we have programs that are supporting. We're, you know, we have, you know, new people that are leading. So things are different. So now we can just do that. Like, you know, we don't have to wait because we, we talked about that. And, and so, you know, let's just figure out what those three, four things are that, that we wanna watch to see if we're making an impact because we have to start showing that we're making an impact. And all we know is that we have students coming in, in need. And I've said this before, I don't get excited about a literacy lab in high school. I mean, it, it, I, you know, I wrote down here, this is sad to me. You know, this breaks my heart that we're talking about this in high school. So I, I understand it. We have to respond to it. I appreciate that we are trying to, to deal with, you know, the state of our students that, that, you know, many of you inherited. This is not to point blame at anything. This is just, we inherited this. So now what do we do? Right? And, and so, yeah, I mean, this, the programs and the services and the, you know, everything that you all are thinking of to, to give exposure and to create a love for reading. I, I love that energy, but that doesn't excite me. It saddens me. And so, let's write the prescription and figure out what the kids need, you know, and let's go in on them because we have an opportunity and yeah, and we could put Northwestern to work. So let's do more.
I, I wanna try to excite you.
Well, I get excited by, you know, what I'm hearing, but.
Well, let me, let me see, let me share something from our miracles room, winter report, which, which really blew my mind. And I'm a huge early childhood advocate because that's where it starts. Like, you know, again, from, from the very beginning of a child's educational journey, you know, that, that I think is, is core to us ensuring that our students have sustained success. But prior to the strategic plan, three, three years before strategic plan, right? Only 31% of our, our, our early childhood kiddos were kindergarten ready. Since then, since we've created a strategic plan, we are at 74% of those students who are, again, demonstrating kindergarten readiness. And again, this is through a holistic test that tests not only, you know, early literacy and math, but also fine, fine motor, fine and gross motor skills. Again, a comprehensive holistic view of a child. So, so to me, that is what's exciting. And what's exciting is that we're now looking at K, K two literacy and then building that out with the science of reading, correcting years of having literacy. I think we were, you know, following Lucy Calkins, who again was unfortunately proven wrong. I learned Calkins as an educator. I taught it. But I also taught the, you know, Spanish language as a bilingual teacher. And again, we started with the very basics. What does a letter look like? What does it sound like? What do they sound like when you put them together? The science of reading, right? We're gonna go into that and, and dig into those pieces, right? Which excites me. So again, things are new. We have new leadership. We have a new approach. We've been through a pandemic and we need to expand the way we measure childhood and, and educational success for children. And whatever we can do. And I, I'll tell you, I sat, I wanna say six, seven years ago, prior to becoming, being on the board, I sat at a District 65 school board meeting, engaging the then board because folks were upset, right? We, we had, they had put, you know, they had created a, a black student achievement report and, and, and folks from the NAACP, I was with the Latino organization called Latino Resources. Again, just folks from the community came in to, 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 to be, to, to share their, their rage in regards to, again, this persistent opportunity gap. And it's been going on for over 30 years, ever since we started measuring literacy and math. Well, that's problem number one. We narrowed how we measure, you know, child and, and human development. So it's no wonder that, that there's this division and, and folks are cussing each other out because again, we've taken away social studies. We've taken away science. We reduced it to every other week or every other month. I remember teaching, you know, again, in March, as a bilingual teacher, I dreaded that month. You know why? Because I stopped teaching. All I could do is test. I had to give the access test to ensure that my students were, you know, on track to learn English. Then I had to give the, the ISAT, which is the IAR then. I had to give math. We stopped teaching. And that was, that, that was heartbreaking. And kids were, I had kids crying like, maestro, I haven't learned this content yet because we were doing, we hadn't covered it yet because we, again, it was being done in the middle of the year. So all of that to say that that's what drove me to become a school board member because I, I wanna see this change. I, I wanna hear that we're actually doing something. The community that day that we were at that board meeting wanted to see strategies, wanted to see the things that people are talking about today in regards to, okay, we see the gap. What are you gonna do about it? What programs are you gonna put in place? So, so our children can, can succeed and you can normalize success for our kids because we can't seem to see, all we see is bad news. Again, children are more than test scores. Children are more than test scores. Again, we need to be able to find ways, and I agree that we need to find, expand the way we measure academic as well as social, emotional success for our students in order to, to ensure and normalize and sustain academic success for all students in our community.
We will continue. As always, this is always going to be a big issue, I think, for this, this group whenever we come together. So thank you. Thank you for coming and reporting. And we'll continue talking. And now we're going to switch slides to the Avid update.
Mr. Barney, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I know it's late, but we got some good stuff with Avid that we wanna talk about in District 65. So let me introduce who I am. I serve, I am Dr. Angel Turner. I serve as the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. And so I'm excited to be here just to share the new launch this year with Avid and the great work that we're doing in District 65. And so I'm here on behalf tonight, presenting this information on behalf of my colleague Kirby Callum, who could not be here tonight, but he works extensively with the schools team. And he supports the work of our Avid program as well as the counselors in our district. And so we're very, very grateful to continue to partner with, with Kirby. So I, I think I can hold it down for him tonight. So let's go. All right. So I'm gonna start with just really talking about, I wanna begin with the origin of our story of Avid in District 65 and really start with our why. And then I'm gonna launch us into the goals, talk a little bit about our recruitment, enrollment, our site team, some activities and partnerships we've done with ETHS this year. And then we're gonna forecast ahead in terms of what we're looking forward to in D65 with Avid for the 2023, 2024 school year. And then we'll end with a very cool video that shows our work in action with our, our Avid instructors and our students. So why Avid? So first of all, in District 65, Avid prepares students to excel in middle school for access to honors and AP courses in high school on a path towards college and career success. And so I wanna be very clear around really naming that we're really working extremely hard in District 65 to ensure that our kids, when they go to District 202, they are ready and prepared for the AP and the honors classes. And they are on that path to college and career success. And so we know that Avid provides our students with opportunities to create community, to connect and relate and collaborate with each other and with their peers and with their teachers and build the structures to be prepared, organized and thorough. It really. It really teaches them the strategies to comprehend, analyze, and synthesize the information that they engage in, in all of their courses. They develop the skills to inquire, process, and present, and then they then take that and internalize the motivation to engage, follow through, and succeed. And our goal is that they carry those traits into District, uh, two oh two with them. And so we're excited about that work. Our goals really is to ensure that all Avid students in eighth grade are qualified and ready to take Avid at, at ETHS in ninth grade. And so we are grateful that we have District two oh two as a partner to really learn from, um, and allow really our students now to really see what Avid looks like at the high school level. We're excited, and our belief is that all students in eighth grade place into ninth grade math and language arts, both mixed honors classes at ETHS, without needing that additional support or without really having to go into the literacy lab for the additional support. I- if they need it, they need it, but our goal is to really make sure that they come in to District two oh two, ready and equipped with those skills. Um, our Avid students report stronger-than-average responses for adult connections, relationships and well-being, and engagement on the Panorama Survey that we take annually every year. And so this is huge for us, because I think oftentimes we, we remove ourselves away from how students feel, right? And so this gives us a way to say, how are they really adapting to and connecting with the adults that they engage in every day as they engage in teaching and learning? And so that is really important for us. Our hope is that the students participate in, uh, three to four college and career readiness experiences each year, um, and we have provided them the opportunity to do that this year. And then all of our Avid students in eighth grade have identified high school course pathways aligned with their initial college and career plans within School Link's College and Career Platform. And so we use that platform extensively with our students to get them prepared, again, to come in successfully and ready to take on the rigorous coursework we know they will engage in in District two oh two. Our recruitment efforts is very simple. We have a website page, we have fifth grade teacher team meetings to really connect with our fifth grade teachers in our feeder schools, we have parent teacher conferences, we can conduct virtual presentations and have question and answer sessions, and then we do targeted phone calls to families, um, all the time, just really trying to help people to really connect with the purpose and goal for Avid. I think sometimes it's this, um, it's a lack of knowledge around how Avid is really, is, is for or designed for the kids that quote unquote really need it, right? And we're sometimes in denial, but we, we have kids that need it. And again, Avid is designed as an intervention and a support to really support students to be successful. And so I think as adults, when we can move away from that and really understand that it's about really helping students to be successful, we will, we will start to understand and appreciate the need for, for why Avid is designed the way it is. So our recruitment efforts, um, students must apply to be eligible for Avid. Our preference is really given to students who are most in need and would most benefit from the Avid experience. And typically, those students score in the middle third percentile for reading and math based on their math scores. They are first-generation college-eligible students from underrepresented college-going backgrounds, so we target our Black Latinx and our First Nation. And, and we also look at, um, teacher recommendation from fifth grade, right? No one knows the kids better than our fifth grade teachers for those students, right? And so that means a lot for us because they've had these students for a long period of time, and so they can give us an idea around which students would really benefit, um, for success going into middle school, being a part of Avid. So as you can see, our enrollment numbers here really just talk through, we are meeting our goals of serving a higher proportion of students who are underrepresented amongst college-going families, and that really is what this slide just indicates for you. And then this next slide just talks about, um, with, we have two sections, sections at each school where we are serving between fifteen to twenty percent at the sixth grade level at Shute, Haven, and Nichols Middle School. And I want to be very transparent, we launched Avid this year with an intentional focus around our middle schools. And I'll talk to you a little bit about how we're going to expand that out to our two K eight magnet schools, but our focus this year, again, my mantra is go as slow as we must. We started that with our middle schools, and our goal is to grow that out, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that in a few. So at each school site team, at each of our middle schools, there's a school site team. That site team consists of the principal, assistant principal, instructional coach who serves as the team leader, the elective teachers, essentially the Avid teachers, the grade level lead teachers, and then the school counselor. Avid cannot be successful in schools without the school site team. It's imperative that this site team is in place, principals and assistant principals are on board. I was fortunate enough, when I transitioned into this role, I was able to actually go to Seattle with that team this summer and actually spend time, boots on the ground, in the training with them. And we're going to continue that process as we continue to build out, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that. But it's important to first and foremost make sure that the folks indicated here, get the training and development so that we know how to implement Avid with fidelity. So some of the activities we've engaged in, our kids have gone on college visits, we've been to Oakton College, we've been to Northwestern, they've done career presentations, engaged in community service, we have a reading buddies partnership, they've engaged in tutorials, and so it's just been nice really seeing them engaged and really, uh, doing the work. In terms of Avid school-wide, we have some principles that we believe in. One is just the organized binder, right? Really, Avid is designed to teach kids how to do school. And so creating an organized binder, really helping them with focused note-taking, helping them to really launch and implement the WICAS strategies, which essentially is writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading across all content areas, and then making sure that our staff are trained, professional, in professional development, has been key and imperative to the success of Avid, uh, in District sixty-five. So here, what you see on the screen is, uh, we're, again, I'm, I'm so just grateful. Kirby spends a lot of time, but we meet with him, uh, myself and, um, the Chief of Schools, Lydia Ryan, Ryan, we meet with Kirby on a, on a bi-weekly basis. And so he shares with us and talks to us about how our kids have had the opportunity to, where ETHS came into District sixty-five, and so what you see here is that partnership. You'll also see that we replicated it. D sixty-five students were able to come to ETHS and spend time in the Avid classes and actually see that the things that they're learning in middle school, those same strategies and practices are being implemented in high school. So that's been very cool to see. And so our plans for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four is to really grow out, um, continue to grow out our sixth and seventh grade elective section specifically at Shute, Haven, and Nichols. But we're going to do something very courageous and ambitious. We're going to build out sixth to eighth grade elective at King Arts and at Betsy Rose this year. And our rationale for doing that is, is, again, as I said, as slow as we must, we just started with our middle schools. And so as we catch our K eight magnet schools up to speed, we want to be able, because they're smaller than just our larger middle schools, we're able to build that out, um, with an elective for sixth to eighth grade at King Arts and Betsy Rose, because we want to make sure that we're working extremely hard. And then by the time the three middle schools catch up, then all of our schools, our two K eight magnets and our middle schools in District sixty-five will be fully implemented with Avid in our middle schools. And so that's essentially our goal long-term. And so now what I want to do is just show you D sixty-five Avid in action. I don't know if this is going to play. Pete, let's see. Okay, you got it. Okay, you make it happen for me. Thank you.
So Avid stands for Advancement via Individual Determination. The program is really pushing for college and career readiness.
So it's giving you all of those foundational skills that you need to be successful in high school and college.
Going to write your problem up there, and then you're going to walk them through your thinking process.
Some of the unique experiences are, for example, college visits.
Our sixth graders, we took them to Oakton Community College, and we also plan to take them to Northwestern.
We also have guest speakers, and they do tutorials with collaborative study groups.
They're going to take the Pringles, and they need to construct a three sixty-degree circle. It has to be freestanding.
Ideas, ideas, we need ideas.
It's going good right now, but it looks good. It's like a seesaw, but that's good.
As soon as they benefit the most from Avid, our first-generation college students and students whose families could use additional support in helping them with the structure that they need to be better learners.
What's another number that we could do that equals to twenty-fourth?
And a lot of things that Avid is teaching, I kind of wish I would have learned at a younger age, um, like how to take notes and what are the steps to applying to college? Or even what are some of the colleges out there?
So I chose the University of Michigan. Well, I was interested because my mom went there, and, uh, I went on a trip to like look at the campus.
It helps them in their other classes because they're learning organizational skills, study skills, as well as critical thinking skills, and how to ask higher-level questions.
The students take notes in their classrooms. In Avid, they're able to process those notes and use those notes to determine where am I confused, what do I need to ask my teacher?
And they try to work out the problem on their own as far as they can. And then on Thursdays, we have what is called the tutorials, and basically they help each other work through their problem by asking questions and guiding each other through it.
The students are actually grouped by content areas that they are confused in. So we might have a math table, a ELA table, a science table, a social studies table, and they work within those groups.
I think middle school is the right time for Avid. As they start to move from class to class, they need to be prepared and organized for each other's classes, and Avid is teaching them organization skills and how to take notes, which will also prepare them for high school.
And like, what better opportunity to learn it while you're in middle school, where you have teachers usually that are more nurturing, um, they realize that you're eleven, twelve, and so they provide those extra supports you need.
And then also teaches that discipline that they need. They start at such a young age learning that, and by the time they get to college and they have more freedom, that they already know what is necessary to be successful.
Thank you.
All right, and to try to follow that up, um, my name is, uh, Kealan Bonner, and I am the, um, Avid Coordinator here at the, uh, high school. So, um, I just want to first, uh, speak to the, uh, wonderful collaborator that Kirby Callum has been, uh, because, um, just without, uh, having, uh, somebody down there at the, uh, junior high level, um, like, these, uh, collaborations wouldn't be possible. So I am just so happy that we have this program at the, uh, junior high school level now, because that was, uh, really one of the reasons why I wanted to come on board, because, uh, I taught Avid at my previous school, and I saw the, uh, tremendous turnarounds that it has had in student, uh, performance. And, uh, just seeing that that is at the, uh, sixth grade level now is going to actually start to make some of those changes, make some of those moves that we all have been, uh, talking about. So what I want to do though is not to be, uh, redundant, but I just want to, uh, talk about how, uh, this plays out here at the, um, high school. All right? Uh, so you can see our, uh, logo right there was, uh, designed by a, uh, student, uh, here too. So you can see, uh, that we have, uh, that there. So what I want to talk about is, uh, just the reasons why we, uh, love Avid here at the, um, high school, some of our recruitment, um, efforts that are going on right now, things that we have done, and then some of our goals as well. So, uh, very first thing, uh, the, the main thing is that we want to make sure that students are getting all of the executive functioning skills and motivation, the academic achievement, and, uh, and then, um, Avid is preparing these students to succeed at the, uh, high school level in very rigorous, um, courses. Now that we have, um, Avid at the, uh, junior high level, that transition is going to be seamless from D sixty-five to the, um, high school now, just because of all of the vertical, uh, planning that we have in place right now. And then you all have seen all of the, um, just this year, just all of the, uh, touches that we have had with each other, because we've been talking about the, uh, collaboration, and that's something that we have been working really hard on, like firsthand. So, uh, that way, like I said, now you can start to see how some of those things are playing out. And, uh, the one thing that, that I always tell to the, uh, students is that, um, I want them to be able to see themselves in any place that they want to be in, in life, and this program is going to help those students get to that place. Uh, so the recruitment that we have here is very similar to what you see at the, uh, middle school. Uh, we have a, uh, website, and then on that website, we have two different sections of that where it is for just, um, incoming, um, eighth graders to, uh, see everything that they need for the, uh, program. And then also, we let students, uh, come into the program at various levels at the high school level too. So if some of those students, uh, had to take some of the, uh, reading, uh, um, courses, and then they weren't able to get into the program their freshman year, then they have the opportunity to join their sophomore, junior, and in some rare cases, their senior years too. And we also take recommendations from the eighth grade teams. The math scores, uh, like we said, are, uh, cut scores are a little bit different because we're looking at students in the, uh, fiftieth percentile or, um, higher at the, uh, high school, just because we have other, uh, resources and things that students need to be able to take advantage of too. Actually, I will be at Nichols tomorrow morning, bright and early, um, talking to students and trying to recruit them for the, uh, program there. Uh, we also have the targeted phone calls where we reach out to families, just let them know about the, um, opportunities that, um, Avid will, uh, provide their students. So here's some things that we have done. Seniors have gone to U of I because they didn't get that opportunity due to pandemic. So I made sure, like, I took like a little bus to kids, drove them down there. I was like, y'all want to go to U of I? We going to U of I. So, uh, took them down there early, uh, this school year. ComEd has a, uh, Career Day, because one thing that we are really focusing on now is not only the college, but the career readiness portion of this, because I feel like you have to understand what you want to do and where you want to go, and then try to find the university that is going to fit in with that. So we're trying, uh, now, well, I shouldn't say trying, but what we're doing now is we are giving students opportunity to do more of that, um, exploration with, uh, various, uh, companies. So ComEd put on an excellence, uh, Career Day fair where they had every aspect of their, uh, company, and all of our students could see that, like, ComEd just wasn't like climbing poles when the power goes out and whatnot, right? So they were able to see all the facets of what they do. So that was a fantastic opportunity for those students. We've also gone to, uh, Carthage, we've gone to the University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee, uh, we've gone to DePaul, we've gone to UIC, and then we're also going to take a group of, uh, fifty students, uh, to UIC's Engineering Day in, um, April. Like I said, I got students there, they, they have no idea what engineering is, but it's the exposure, like I said, uh, previously, um, because students don't know what they don't know, and they're never know if you don't take them. So that's why we try to, like, we just want to, uh, get them to see as much as possible. So, some, uh, recent data on our program, if you see right there, that picture is of our, um, honor roll, uh, celebration, and then we'll get into some of those things too, because it's not enough for the students just to, uh, just to be making all of the wonderful, um, uh, things that they are, uh, doing, they need to also be celebrated for those things too. Um, but, but like I said, we'll talk about that a little bit more later. But you can see all of the students that we have on, um, honor roll there, uh, have seventy-one percent of our freshmen, fifty percent of our sophomores. Don't worry, the sophomores were highly upset when they saw those numbers, so they had, they, they took it upon themselves to be like, we going to be up in that seventy percent range too, because they, because they did not like the freshmen beating them. So, uh, and neither did the seniors, and neither did the juniors. So, uh, that's one thing. So we are, and they all are challenging themselves to, uh, achieve at a very high level. And then our graduating seniors as of right now have one point five million dollars in scholarships to date, um, and then, uh, ninety-nine percent of our students, uh, go on to two or four-year, uh, universities after, uh, graduation. So you can see the success of the program, and think about how that is going to, like, double, triple, like, once we start getting students in from the, uh, junior high school. So like I said, the change is coming, just got to be a little bit patient, but trust me, everybody in the Avid program, from the junior high to the high school, that is our number one goal, to make sure that our students can see themselves anywhere they want to be. So things that we have on the, uh, horizon, as I said, we had the, uh, trip to, uh, UIC. We also have North, uh, North Flight Theater that is coming in and working with our sophomore Avid students with the, uh, Speak Up program. And right now, what they are working on is they are working on a, uh, a group venture on exploring their identity and how that plays out, uh, with themselves, with the community, and then just, and then just the world. with the community, and then just, and then just the world at large. And so each sophomore class, we have three sections of sophomores. Small groups of students are creating their own narrative on those things, which they will perform on stage in April. We also have our seniors, they have a College 101 experience at Northwestern. As they spoke to earlier this evening, there are five students at Northwestern that are working with our seniors. They have already come in for a panel to just talk about any questions that the students have had. And then they're going to do a fishbowl activity on the 28th of this month with those same students. And then on April 11th, those students are going to go to Northwestern to experience college firsthand. So they'll sit in on classes, they'll get to talk to professors, they'll get to talk to academic advisors, admissions, all of those things. And it's not to recruit them to Northwestern, it's to actually educate them on the college-going experience. So then that way, the students have something to hold on to because it's all about having that like prior knowledge right before you get somewhere. So we are just trying to make sure that they know what they need. So when they get to college, they can step on there and do what they need to do. And some of our goals that we have is also that seamless transition from middle school to high school. And we want to enhance our partnership with D-65. Like we're doing some great things, but we want to do even more. One thing, one of those things that we want to do is we want to try to, at least by 2025, when we have the eighth graders actually coming through our doors, we want to make sure that we are going to the same trainings with the D-65 staff just so we can have all of that cohesion and we know exactly like what's going to happen with those students. We already know what's going on with those students, but we just want to make sure that we have that transition. So when they come in as freshmen, they can just hit the ground running. And then, like I said, we just want to continue to just, like I said, just keep working with our counterparts in D-65. And also, we want to try to get the groups together as a whole just so we can start to celebrate the achievements of the students. Because we have been talking about those things, you have seen those things, but we want to make sure that the students also get to lift up each other in both of those programs. So with that, I'd like to thank you for your time. And then any questions, comments, or concerns that anybody has, be taken those now.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you so much, board, boards, questions, Pat.
Well, I just wanted to thank all of you for your presentation. I've been a huge fan of Avid for many, many years when it was introduced to me by this wonderful English teacher at E T H S who took over the program. And he was Mr. Campbell back then. And, but in all seriousness, just a fabulous program. And I've long wanted to see it in a more seamless way through District 65 and 202. So I'm excited. And I think it really picks up on some comments that both Biz and Monique made, and Pat as well, that, you know, these are all our students and we need to have more seamlessness. I mean, I work with, in my day job, I work with districts outside of Illinois and they always say, why do you have different school districts, you know? And, and I, you know, we're all used to it now, but there is that question. Eighth grade to ninth grade is just a step, right? But in our situation, it's changing districts and all this. And so I just, I think that this kind of Avid in general, specifically, but in general, as an example of, they're just our kids. We're just taking them from that building over there to this building over here. And so, you know, the more that we can do this kind of thing and the more that we can really look at those examples to see what's working, what's not, how can we learn from Avid as a seamless program to apply to some of the other things we've talked about tonight? So I just think it's a great opportunity and really wonderful work that you all are doing. And so it's very exciting that now we've got, you know, six years of Avid for our kids. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
I was going to say, that's been a long time coming. So thank you to District 65 for bringing Avid on board.
Yes, it has been a long time coming.
And I just wanted to ask kudos to you all for the work you've been doing for over a decade. Just, well, our students, this is a question, so I know Avid is kind of, you choose. But if our students want to stay, because it looks like we have 90 right now in this class and if they stay, over 90, and they stay together, are they guaranteed to be accepted into Avid in ninth grade? Or is it a different process? How does that typically go for you all?
I am under the, well, I would assume that those students would just roll into the high school if they were in Avid in junior high school. I don't know why that would change in high school. So, and we're looking to expand the program just based on what's going on at the middle school. So this year, we are planning for, this year, we have two sections of freshmen. Next year, we'll have three sections of freshmen. We'll have two sections of sophomores, we have three sections of juniors and two sections of seniors. So we are looking to just keep adding sections and just keep growing the program because the goal at the very least is, I know that the board's goal is to get it to at least 10% of the student population. So that's what the goal is.
Awesome, that's exactly where I was going, like adding, when I was at the high school as a principal, adding those classes and making sure you got room as they come in. So absolutely. And we make room if you don't have. You got space, can we see it?
Yeah. Yeah, we can be very creative with our space, yes.
Just want to underscore, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Liz.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I do have a sixth grader in Avid and we've been really happy with the course so far and how rigorous it is and them learning the note-taking, but just everything. Basically, you're teaching them how to learn successfully and all of the skills that go along with that. And, and I know when I was that age, I didn't, I didn't have those skills and they weren't being taught in the schools. So I'm just really grateful for this opportunity for the middle school level to have that. And I wish you all the best in transitioning them to the high school. And I'm really excited to see how those kids come into ninth grade with their skills that they'll have.
That's great. Thank you for that. And I just wanted to underscore something that Mr. Bonner said. First of all, this is Kealan Bonner, who's our new Avid coordinator. I don't think our board has met Kealan yet. Kealan is an experienced educator, over 20 years' experience, math teacher, was one of the single, you know, black teachers teaching B.C. calculus at his previous district and also teaching Avid. So we're very privileged to have Mr. Bonner, and a Golden Apple Scholar. Very privileged to have Mr. Bonner with us. But I want to underscore something that he said. 10 to 12% of our student population will be Avid students. That is our goal. We'll do that over time and we know that that is going to have a tremendous impact on teaching and learning here at E T H S.
You're right. That's exciting, thank you.
This excites me.
Yeah, this is exciting.
This excites me. Oh, I mean, come on now, come on. But, and I'm looking at the data, right? Where 71% of the Avid freshmen did better than the sophomores. So, you know, change is occurring. And, and I acknowledge that, but you know, I'm just not comfortable, period, right? But this is great. My son was a student of Avid, so I know that this works. So now, E T H S has to be able to take care of the 71% that are improving and more when they come here. So that, that, you spoke of that seamless transition is key. So they, that they get the same attention that they've gotten experiencing this for the first time, right? Because this is like exciting to them, that we give them that same excitement when they come here. So now we have a responsibility to live up to, right? So, welcome to E T H S. But this is, this is great. This is the prototype. I mean, that's what, you know, so how can we duplicate that and plot it somewhere else? Because this is what we're talking about.
And one last thing, Liz, you brought up a really good point about the organization. We have taken a lot of those strategies from Avid and also using organized binders. And we're using them in our advisory classes. So those executive functioning skills are starting to be cultivated in our middle schools. And that's in all of our schools, right, Dr. Turner?
Yeah.
And that's what we've been doing too.
Yeah, yeah, because they work. The skills work. So my daughter was also in Avid and she's still calling Mr. Campbell. So sorry. All right, so I am definitely a supporter and proponent of Avid. I love talking about it. So thank you, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming and staying late and just getting us going. Welcome, welcome to E T H S. All right, shall we just adjourn now? We, I guess we have a few things to do, just a few. And we'll start with District 65 action items.
Actually, we're going to change the order and we'll have 202 go so you won't have to go through our discussion item, so.
We'll do that. Okay, okay. So we're going to skip to item nine. District 202 information and action items. The first item, Dr. Beavis is over on the computer. We have three FOIA's in our packet.
I don't have them in front of me, but yes, we do. And if someone would like to read them to us.
Moon Manog, Kim, and Williamson.
Great, thank you, Gretchen. And the responses are in your packet, thank you.
Yes, they are. Okay, thank you, thank you, Gretchen. Okay, the first action item is approval of international travel for the year 2023-24. Can I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the next action item is approval of resolution authorizing non-renewal of administrator. And I'm going to read the resolution. A resolution authorizing notice of dismissal and non-renewal of administrative contract, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Evanston Township High School District 202, Cook County, Illinois as follows. One, the non-tenured administrator listed on the attached Exhibit 1 will not be re-employed for the following school year is hereby dismissed as an employee in this district effective at the close of the present school year and will not have her current administrative contract renewed. Two, the president and secretary of this Board of Education are authorized to give and the superintendent or designee shall deliver by certified mail, return receipt requested, and personnel's personal service the notice of non-renewal attached as Exhibit 2. And three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, adopted this 21st day of February 2023 by a roll call vote as follows. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Did you have a motion first?
Yeah, we didn't do a motion, did we need to?
Oh, yes, we do need a motion. Yes, could I have a motion to adopt, please?
So moved, second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. The next item is consent agenda. And that consists of approval of roof, windows, and masonry project bid, approval of minutes from February 6, 2023, closed and regular session meetings, approval of bills, treasurer's report from December 2022, and the personnel report.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, and could I have a motion for adjournment?
Move we adjourn?
202. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're adjourned and stay as long as you like.
Thank you. We'll try not to stay too long. Thank you for the coffee, we're going to need it. So the next item on our agenda, tech consent agenda, Maya, if you could read our.
All right, I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, and separations, January 2023 Board of Education and committee meeting minutes, destruction of December 2020 closed session meeting recordings, November 2022 list of bills, treasurer's report, budget amendments, February 2023 contracts above $25,000, 2023 summer asbestos abatement projects, and 2024, 2025 school calendar, the draft calendar.
Second.
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
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 All right, approval of an intergovernmental agreement. I move that the Board of Education approve the intergovernmental agreement for student services between Evanston-Scokey School District 65 and Rockford School District 205.
Second.
Kellburn?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes. The last item we have for discussion is, oh, it will be for discussion is D-65 requests for proposals, RFPs, for the 2023 summer capital projects. Rafael, if you can share a little bit more information with the board regarding those summer, those 2023 summer capital projects?
Thank you. If the board remember back in, I believe, in the fall of last year, the district architect, Carter Conklin, presented to the board and talked about the need for us to start tackling some of the building projects that outstanding in the district. At that time, what was presented to the board is to try to do $6 million this upcoming summer and do another $6 million in the summer of 2024. Now, last, earlier this month, we actually, we presented the asbestos abatement recommendation to the board for three of our schools. And the other part of the project, the window, the window repair, the floor replacement, and some ceiling repairs are what you have in front of you right now. The architect firm of Carter Conklin did the design work and let the bid process. And also met with the bidders to make sure they understood the content of the drawings as well as the bid document. And based on the submission that was provided to, to the district, the architect firm is recommending the lowest responsible bidders, here for approval by the board. Now, based on the number that was submitted, what we'll be looking, I'll be looking at pretty much $6 million in, in work to be done this summer.
This, this package, is this, this is what we saw at the committee meeting last week?
What you saw, you saw the, actually, it was included in the package, but we didn't talk about it.
Got it.
So what we talked about specifically were the asbestos abatement. But we didn't talk about the window work, we didn't talk about the ceiling repair, we didn't talk about the LED light for the rest of the buildings that were not completed.
But that was in the packet.
Yes.
And that's not substantially different here?
No, it's not.
Okay.
And these are repairs that can be begun in the summer and completed in the summer?
Yes.
Before school starts, right?
Yes, that's, that's the goal.
Yeah.
I mean, as soon as the board approves, for example, the LED, we can, they can start doing that just like they did for the bulk of the building right away. They can do it after school, they can do it on weekends, day, meaning twin supply. And as relates to the window work, the vendor can order the window right away because there's a lead time. None of our windows are standard windows and especially the windows that have been, they're pretty old. So they have to be ordered ahead of time so we can get, once they get it back. So we can get, once they get it back, once the vendor gets it back, we can start, they can start the installation right away. And the same thing goes for the ceiling. So the, the asbestos work will be done as soon as school is out. They will start doing work on that, on the abatement.
So I did ask a little bit about this last week. So there was over 400 individual contractors that were notified about this and we only received 26 bids.
Yes, 28, I think, 26, 28 bids, yeah.
Okay, and then I asked last time, did we have any of the contractors that we are awarding to be either minority or women-based enterprises?
Based on what I know, no.
Okay.
None of them, even though there was outreach made to try to engage
Well, yeah, 400.
Minority and women-owned contracting firm.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Are any of them local to Evanston?
I don't think so, no. Even though we, we do what we can to make sure they're informed about the pending work and we just, we didn't get anything in time, yeah. I mean, I guess to that point, since we're getting ready to build a school in the fifth ward, we're going to undertake intensive work to make sure that we engage local firms as well as women, minority-owned firm to be part of the subcontractors, to do the work.
And I think City of Evanston has their LEP local employment program too.
Yes, they do.
I'm a huge fan of keeping Evanston dollars in Evanston.
Yeah, that would be great. We would love to do that.
Yeah, okay.
And whenever, in the past, whenever we've had bids coming out, we contact the N double A C P, we let them know what we have coming to see if they can notify local vendors to be able to do some, you know.
It's a substantial amount of work.
Yes, it is.
It's nice to be able to invest back in the buildings. I think the, the shell of Haven, getting those new windows will probably, the energy efficiency alone be huge.
And the same thing goes with the tiles too. We have a lot of old tiles that are falling apart.
Yep.
And that's another reason why we decided to address those. And especially when the, the LED lights were being done, when they went in behind the tile to install the electrical throughout the LED, some of those tiles were so old, they started falling apart. So we decided to prioritize those to make them look good.
And this all, does this all fit into our plan for capital improvements? I'm assuming it does.
Yes, yes.
I'm excited that we can get LED lights in all the buildings because I know in the original proposals, it was, you know, most of them, but it's nice to be able to get them all in.
And I think I mentioned to the board, when we did a quick payback savings, we were looking at $250,000 a year in just electric savings from going from fluorescent light to LED lights. And the lights are brighter if you've been in a building and people made comments about how things just look much better than they used to look. And this also is aligned with City of Evanston CARP goals of Climate Action Resilience Plan, transitioning from fluorescent to LED light.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, that aligns with that. And our D-65 climate committee, I know, is pushing us as a district to make sure that we adopt some of the, you know, CARP and all that good stuff. So good to hear that.
And thank you, Rafael, for sticking with our master facility plan, addressing, you know, our health, life, and safety first and then dealing with the envelope of the buildings. Like that's really critical that we do this strategically as our dollars are limited. And so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. If there's no. So with no further business, I adjourn this meeting at 10:00 PM sharp. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.